Was I just talking on mute, or were you guys able to hear me? Can you hear me now? Okay, excellent. Well, you missed it. It was a brilliant introduction. I just want to say that I was waiting for our other Commissioner Tom to join us. I don't see him. We have 20 participants. I was just scrolling through to check. So let me just start by saying that this is the Trinidad June 16th, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. And I'd like to go ahead and call the meeting to order. I wanted to start by saying that I appreciate the fact that there is a lot of interest in our first topic tonight, and we will get to it as quickly as possible. And I want to just recognize the passion and the dedication of all the folks who are have sent us comments, who are attending the meeting tonight. And those include folks from the Trinidad Rancheria, from the Uroch Tribe, the Civic Club, and TASA, Shariya Ancestral Society, as well as, you know, citizens from, other citizens from Trinidad and the surrounding area. So we expect that we're going to have a lively discussion. But pursuant to the Brown Act and Robert's Rules of Order, we're going to go ahead and do a little housekeeping first. So with that, I want to ask our staff for please a roll call of the commissioners that are in attendance.
Good evening, Commissioner Kelly.
I am here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Stockness.
Present.
Commissioner Hopkins. I don't see Tom. Commissioner Hakenan.
Present.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and proceed since we do have a quorum. And hopefully Commissioner Hopkins will be joining soon. So with that, our first order of business, as I mentioned, was to review, do a little housekeeping. We're going to review the minutes from
I want to get my picture up there.
Diane, you're off mute. Did you want to, were you commenting?
Or Well, I'm, my picture isn't showing, so I don't know what the computer problem is.
Did you click on the video icon at the bottom of your screen?
Okay.
Try that. Let's see if we can, it may be
It'll be just a minute. My husband has some other things on here.
Okay. All right. And I see Commissioner Hopkins has joined. If we can let the record reflect that, please. All right, I'm going to, Diana, is it okay to move ahead then with these minutes while you're sorting that out? Or do you want me to hold up for a minute? There you are. I see you.
Okay, I'm set.
Beautiful. All right, so the first order of business then is to take a look at the minutes from the meeting of May 19th, our last Planning Commission meeting. I'm going to go ahead and open to public comments first on those meeting minutes. Are there any public comments? Please raise your hand if you have any for the meeting minutes that were published in the packet. I do not see any staff. Help me out. If you see handraisers that I don't see, I'll do my best here to, you know, keep tabs. All right. I will bring that, I'm going to close public comments then, seeing none on these minutes, and bring it back to the commission. Planning Commissioners, did you have any comments, questions, or concerns on these minutes from May 19th?
Thank you.
I have just a knit on the last item on the minutes, item nine, adjournment. We adjourned at PM. Yes, we did, thankfully. I just don't know what time PM was.
Okay, Angela, if you don't mind correcting, I believe we were, we wrapped up around eight, but I'm not 100% sure.
Not, not that important.
Okay, all right. I had no, no issues or questions on the minutes. And I see Mr. Haken shaking his head. Commissioner Hopkins, any concerns? And Commissioner Stockness?
No.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, the minutes from the May 19th meeting are therefore approved.
And according to my minutes, I'm showing the meeting ending at 8:44 PM.
Ah, okay. Well, we're a dedicated group. All right, our next item of business is approval of tonight's agenda. Commissioners, any comments or questions about the agenda for tonight? Commissioners, Stockness?
Do you think we should do the other two items first, or do the Civic Club first because of so many, so much public interest?
You know, I'm inclined to go ahead and keep the agenda as is because there are so many people who I think are here for that topic. But, but I'd love to hear from, you know, you and the other commissioners if you agree.
The, yeah, that's fine with me. I would just like to have a break.
Okay.
Because sometimes we don't get a break, and that, that doesn't work for me. Also, I'd like to stay at the three-minute public comment.
Yes.
Because there are so many concerned citizens.
Yes, yes, I, we will make sure to do that. Angela has volunteered to be the timekeeper when we get to that topic. And, and I'll introduce that, and we'll keep tabs. All right. So no changes, and I guess to the agenda? All right, let's move on then to our first, oh, I'm sorry, pardon me, items from the floor first. At this time, I'll read my little blurb. At this time, we offer members of the community an opportunity to come to the podium, in this case, raise your hand, to speak on items that are not on tonight's agenda. So these are other things that are not on tonight's agenda. And please note that pursuant to the Brown Act, the commission is not allowed to give detailed responses to those comments and items, you know, discuss it at length, but we will offer, you know, we might ask a question or that type of thing. Are there items that are not on tonight's agenda that you'd like to speak to?
Okay.
Okay, I do not see anyone with a topic. Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and close items from the floor. And I would like to then move on to our first agenda item for this evening. So this is the design review, use permit, grading, and the grading permit for a new permanent foundation and associated improvements for the Trinidad Memorial Lighthouse. And this is in approximately, to be in approximately its current location at the Trinidad Harbour, which is APN 042071008, for those of you who want to, want to look that up. As Diane mentioned, we will be taking public comments in a bit. We're going to first go to staff report. I just want to assure everyone that you will be treated with respect tonight. You will be given a chance to speak if you desire to. And I wanted to mention that we have received over 75 comments on this topic. So I understand that there is a lot of passion around this. And, you know, we've read every single one of them. In addition, the planning commissioners have read the materials that were provided. So we feel prepared, but we're also open-minded. I do want to then, you know, given, follow our, our rules and our, kind of our procedural methods here. So we're going to start with the staff report. And we'll probably ask for the submitter of the permit application to make comments if they'd like to add something. We'll then do the commissioner Q and A. So the commissioners get an opportunity to ask their questions. And then I will open to public with the three-minute limit so that everybody gets a chance to speak. So that's kind of, I just wanted to lay that out since we have folks who maybe haven't attended a planning commission meeting before. So with that, Trevor, would you mind kicking us off with a staff report?
Thank you, Cheryl. Sure. So like you mentioned, this project is the design review, use permit, and grading permit to put the Memorial Lighthouse on a permanent foundation and some associated improvements with that, permanently locate it in approximately the, the location that's in now. Most of you are probably aware of, of the, familiar with, with the location and the site. So located with, within the harbour area adjacent to the road that leads up to Trinidad Head and the, the vacation rental that's, that's just above it. And, and you're probably also familiar with, with a little bit of the background of the project. The, the lighthouse obviously was, was formerly located near the intersections of Trinity and Edward Street. Due to active land movement, it was moved in, in 2017. The original proposal was to just move it back a ways. Unfortunately, there was some soil disturbance that was not anticipated as, as part of that project. And so it became controversial. And, and in the end, it was moved down to the harbour area as a temporary location. So that was done under an emergency coastal development permit, both from, from the city and the coastal commission. And then it was later approved for a four-year period to remain there while the Civic Club planned for, for a permanent location. In this case, the, although the city is acting on the, the use permit, the grading, and the design review, and the harbour area is what's known as an area of deferred certification. So the coastal commission did not certify the the general commercial zoning that the city had proposed down in the harbour area. And so they did not certify that portion of the city's local coastal program for that area. So the coastal development permit is processed directly through the coastal commission. So the city will act first. And then this project will go to the coastal commission for the coastal development permit. So in terms of the city's action, it would be appealable to the city council, but not to the coastal commission in this case because the coastal development permit is, is being processed directly by the coastal commission. So the, the project description is there will be some additional site preparation to dig down through, there's sort of a retaining wall of tires that's, that's located in the location and, and some unconsolidated beach sands. And so they will excavate to native soils to have a foundation for the, a stable foundation for the lighthouse. And the staging area will be located just to the southwest of the existing site. The, the lighthouse will be temporarily moved there during construction and construction. And that will be, also be the construction, construction staging area. So the project includes a, a large concrete foundation for the lighthouse. It will also house the, the old fog bell, as well as the memorial plaques for those that have been lost or, or buried at sea. And the project does include some, some grading. And some, as I mentioned, some additional sand will be removed from the site. And then some fill will be brought in again to be compacted and provide that stable foundation. Water and electricity will also be provided to the lighthouse through a trench from, from the restroom location. Storm, stormwater will be accommodated by the Rancheria's stormwater project that is slated for construction next summer. The city approved that already. And it's now in, in the coastal development permit process. So in terms of zoning standards, under the commercial zone, social halls, fraternal, social organizations and clubs are principally permitted use. That seems to fit under this, so it is a principally permitted use. Setbacks and density limitations don't really apply to this project. There is a question about the exact height. So there is a height limit of 25 feet in the commercial zone, but a greater height is allowed with approval of a use permit. In Trinidad, heights are supposed to be measured from the average ground elevation covered by the structure. In this case, it's a, it's an area that's already been excavated and disturbed. So the original ground surface is difficult to determine. And the total height from the base to the spire will be 27 feet. So it may not exceed the 25-foot height limit as measured from the average ground elevation. But just in case it is, I have included the use permit findings for that. And the grading ordinance includes a variety of standards. That's really the purview of, of the city engineer to review the project for conformance with the grading ordinance standards, which they did do. We did receive some comments from the city engineer. Those are included in, in the staff report. Some of those issues have been addressed, such as the drainage. And then the other, the other requirements are more notes on the plans and conditions of approval. So the engineer agreed that those can be dealt with through conditions of approval. So that has been included as, as part of the project so that they can make the required finding that, that the project. Let's see. Have the wording that the proposed gradient will not adversely affect the drainage or lateral support of other properties in the area and will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or general welfare, or is not in conflict with the provisions of this chapter and the general plan. So the engineer will need to make those findings and approve the plans prior to construction. Public access traffic control is another issue. Construction is proposed for next spring or summer. So the, the city's stormwater project should be constructed this summer. So that will affect portion of the gravel parking area to put in the new infiltration basins in that area. That will occur this summer. Next summer will also be construction of the Rancheria stormwater project. And so I've included a condition that, that they'll need to address traffic control to maintain public access during construction of, of those projects and coordinate those projects. Trinidad general plan and zoning ordinance protect coastal views. Those are, that's incorporated into the design review findings to think about impacts on visual resources. In terms of geologic stability, a soils, our two soils report was, was prepared for this project. It's not going to affect the, the leach field for the, the harbour uses. And it's based on the soils report, it has recommendations for the foundation. And again, the grading and compaction of soils to maintain stability. And so it's not in a, an unstable area. It's not in a fault hazard zone. It is in tsunami hazard zone, but that is not unique to the lighthouse that, that would include all the harbour properties. And it's not a habitable structure. It doesn't house hazardous materials, so that risk is not considered excessive. Cultural resources, based on the comment letters we've received, is, is obviously an issue. The, the applicant did submit cultural resources information. The site is, is disturbed. It's not expected to directly affect cultural resources in the ground. The issue is, I, I believe, a, a visual impact to Trinidad Head, which is considered a sacred site. I, I'm sure we'll talk about that more as, as we go along. In terms of SEQA and environmental impacts, the project is exempt from, from SEQA, but the applicants did prepare an initial impact assessment using the SEQA initial study checklist to support the exemption. There are exceptions to exemptions under SEQA. But one of the, one of the things with SEQA is that findings under SEQA have to be supported by substantial evidence, which includes, you know, facts and, and expert opinions. I haven't seen any specific information that would indicate that there would be significant impacts or that any of the exceptions would apply. The use permit findings and design review findings, as usual, as usual, have been written in a manner to allow approval. But if the planning commission feels differently, or the public submits information that conflicts with one or more of the findings, those should be reconsidered and reworded accordingly. In terms of the, the city's approval, your approval is going to be based on, you know, making these findings and whether the project is consistent with the city's ordinances. So, and vice versa, the denial, a denial of the project would need to be based on not being able to make one or more of these findings, or, or that the project is, is not consistent with, with the city's ordinance and, and regulations. At this point, staff is recommending approval because the project does, can be found to, to meet the requirements of, of the city's ordinances. I, I have not had a chance to review in detail the, the letter from, from Rosie Claiborne of the Uroch Tribe that was submitted late today. Again, and the other letters, there wasn't really anything specific in terms of what the lighthouse is impacting in terms of, you know, preventing use of a sacred site or interfering with the use of a sacred site. So I'm, I'm not exactly sure what the impact is. Like I said, I haven't had a chance to review the, the latest letter. So at, at this point, I think it might be worthwhile to continue the, the project, to gather some more information about that. So that would be my, my recommendation at this point. Construction isn't planned until next year, so that I don't think that would interfere with, with the Civic Club's timeline. And, and hopefully allow some, some time to resolve some of the issues that, that have been brought up. The city did follow the, the normal and legal notification procedures. Unfortunately, some people felt that they did not receive adequate notifications. So that's another reason to potentially continue the project. So I think that is my staff report, but I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Well, let me do this, if it makes sense. Should we have comments from the Trinidad Civic Club and Rancheria and then pose all our questions at once? Would that be good? Okay, I see some heads nodding. So Trevor, thank you very much for that. Let me start with the Trinic, excuse me, Trinidad Civic Club. Is there someone from the Trinidad Civic Club who would like to speak on this? Yes, Jan West?
Yes, I have prepared a PowerPoint presentation, and I would like to share my screen in order to share that with the commissioners.
All right.
Okay, here we go. So good evening, commissioners, city staff, and participants. We thank the city for considering our permit application for the Trinidad Memorial Lighthouse project. I'm Jan West, co-president of the Trinidad Civic Club, giving the PowerPoint presentation tonight. I'm joined by the rest of the Civic Club leadership team, Dana Hope, co-president, Patty Flescher, and Katrina Holman, representing the Memorial Lighthouse Preservation Committee. Project engineer Joshua McKnight of Trinity Valley Consulting Engineers Incorporated is also in attendance, to whom all technical questions regarding the design or construction of the project should be directed after the presentation. Following this presentation, Jackie Hostler-Carmison, CEO of the Ture Heights Indian Community of the Trinidad Rancheria, will speak, representing the co-applicant and landowner for the project. This is the final rendering of the Memorial Lighthouse project. A beautiful design that we are very excited to share with the community. The enlarged plaque at the top of this slide will be placed on the front wall above the bell. It reads Trinidad Memorial Lighthouse, a monument preserving maritime history dedicated to those lost or buried at sea. As stated on the plaque, the monument serves two purposes. The historical purpose will preserve the iconic 1949 Trinidad Memorial Lighthouse, which houses the original 1871 Fourth Order Fresnel coloil lens and the bronze 1898 fog bell displayed in front, both important maritime navigational aids. The second purpose is to create a memorial commemorating those lost or buried at sea. The Civic Club is dedicated to community service and stewardship of the memorial sites. The memorial wall will remain in place because the plaques are permanently attached and cannot be moved. This Lost at Sea plaque, affixed to the backside of the Memorial Lighthouse, includes the names of coastguardsmen, fishermen, pilots, surfers, and others. Each year, the annual memorial ceremony honors the lives of those engraved, currently a total of 268 names. During the ceremony, a coastguard commander speaks about the heroes who gave their lives rescuing others, and a helicopter flyover honors those whose final resting place is the sea. By honoring loved ones, the Civic Club provides generational continuity for grieving families and a connection to the past for the community. Not only is the Memorial Lighthouse a monument for those lost or buried at sea, but it is also an iconic landmark of the North Coast. Images of the lighthouse are featured by the Humboldt County Visitors Bureau, as well as by countless other businesses and organizations. The importance of the Memorial Lighthouse to Humboldt County and beyond is significant. The lighthouse owned by the Trinidad Civic Club is a beautiful structure immortalized by renowned artists and photographers. Understanding the value of the Memorial Lighthouse to the history of Trinidad is necessary to understand the importance of preserving it. The lighthouse stood on the 45 by 50-foot parcel owned by the Trinidad Civic Club in this beautiful location overlooking Trinidad Bay for 68 years, until coastal erosion on the city of Trinidad-adjacent property made it apparent that it was in jeopardy. The Civic Club hired SHN Geological Consulting and Engineering Firm in 2017 to monitor ground movement and make recommendations. The instrument shows The instrument showed that the lighthouse itself had not moved, but this club was advised that it was only a matter of time. The heartbreaking decision was made to move the lighthouse. A very expensive crane from the Sacramento area was hired to move the approximately 20-ton lighthouse and the 2-ton historic bell on January 10th, 2018. Two lowboys donated by the Big Lagoon and Trinidad Rancherias were used to transport the lighthouse and Fog Bell to their temporary location on Trinidad Harbor property, made available by the generosity of the Trinidad Rancheria. The crane was repositioned in the harbor area where it placed the lighthouse on sand without a foundation. Since then, the lighthouse remains on the edge of the parking lot where the wind has scoured away the sand beneath the structure. The proposed monument will help stabilize Lighthouse Road from further wind erosion. Former Uroch Tribal Chairman Thomas Arroyo was instrumental in obtaining a grant to fund the removal of concrete from the upper memorial site. Members from both the Uroch Tribe and the Trinidad Rancheria worked together to remove the foundation, the slab and the remnants of the Fog Bell supports. The memorial lighthouse has been in limbo for three and a half years. While the club continues to raise the significant amount of money needed to fund this important community project. Trinity Valley Consulting Engineers was hired in 2020 to design the monument and oversee the construction project in 2022. The decision about a permanent home for the memorial lighthouse required a great deal of consideration. The city developed a site selection process in 2018 and invited the community to provide input. During the moving process, many community members approached the civic club with ideas about where the memorial lighthouse should be permanently located. Some very passionate convinced that their suggestion would be the perfect solution. The club developed a list of potential sites and widely advertised a public meeting to help determine which sites were viable. A document was submitted in the commissioner's packet with all the information that was generated during this meeting. A site selection advisory committee was formed to advise the civic club members of viable sites, consisting of three representatives from the Trinidad Representative and Rancheria, four from the Uroch Tribe and three from the lighthouse leadership team representing the civic club. The stakeholders who signed the memorandum of understanding were these. And that was the understanding to move the lighthouse. An attorney representing the Uroch Tribe created and titled the proposed document with input from the Trinidad Rancheria and the civic club. The Surai Ancestral Society was invited to attend the meeting but chose not to participate and did not sign the memorandum of understanding. A document identifying the members of the committee and their tasks was submitted in the packet. Here are the six sites considered at the public meeting. An additional three sites were eliminated because they were private property and not for sale. Publicity for the public event was widely advertised in press releases. The club included an invitation for those unable to attend to submit written input. The Surai Ancestral Society never communicated to the club that they preferred Saunders Park and never communicated with the entities affiliated with the park, the city of Trinidad, Humboldt County Library, Trinidad Museum Society and the Trinidad Coastal Land Trust, the owners of, the owner of the property. The photographs of the sites can be seen in the PowerPoint shown that night, which was also submitted in the packet. The civic club created a list of seven selection criteria to be considered with each of the potential sites. A presenter was recruited for each site to share information along with photographs of the sites projected on the screen. After the presentations, participants were invited to write their pro and con ideas on charts for each of the six sites. Community members were then asked together in small groups to discuss the most viable sites, sketch maps and share their recommended findings with the whole group. Altogether, the civic club considered 12 sites. A document analyzing these sites was submitted in the packet. When all the written input was tabulated and these six sites analyzed, in addition to the other six sites researched, only one location was considered viable, the current location in Trinidad Harbor. It was the only site that met all seven criteria, with no culturally sensitive comments written on the chart at the public meeting. Joshua McKnight's structural design creatively incorporates a number of elements requested by the club leadership team based on community input. Make it beautiful for generations to come, provide space for future memorial wall plaques, feature the bell in a highly visible location. The upper level of the monument is accessible from a trail at the back leading off the road, where benches will be located along with a historic late 1800s anchor dredged from Humboldt Bay. The lovely view of the site encompasses Trinidad State Beach, Peewittoli Island and College Cove. We invite you to contrast the beauty of the proposed monument with the existing circumstances, to envision this beautiful structure in the harbor as a testament to the determination of the community in preserving historic maritime navigational aids and honoring those lost or buried at sea. Interpretive plaques are planned for the monument in several appropriate locations. Low-level minimum lighting will accent the site. The plaque pictured on this slide may be backlit. The Fourth Order Fresnel Lins will use a 20 to 60 watt bulb. A light directed downward will be over the door. In honoring tradition during the holidays, lights will be installed on the red roof. Pictured in the lower left corner, Ruby Rollins of the Trinidad Rancheria on the left and Lucas Garcia of the Churay Ancestral Society, representing the Uroch Tribe on her right, served as cultural monitors during the concrete removal on the upper site in 2019. Nothing of cultural significance was found. Cultural monitoring will also be on the proposed site during the construction process involving any soil disturbance per regulations. It is important to note that cultural considerations played a major role in the selection of the lighthouse location. The most controversial sites at the intersection of Trinity and Main and on Trinidad Head were ruled out for a number of reasons, especially cultural sensitivity. The lighthouse will be located in the parking lot of the harbor, which in no way hinders or denies access to Trinidad Head. This photo gives you a visual image of the viewshed impact with the new structure. The white line above the lighthouse indicates the height of the completed project. Here's a closer view. The white line represents a six-foot pole because the current lighthouse sits two feet above the ground for a total of eight feet higher when the new foundation is built. The memorial lighthouse will be approximately 27 feet above ground. The pole held by James Eamon of Trinity Valley Consulting Engineers shows the eventual height of the structure. The stakes in the photograph to the left show where the sidewalk and structure will align. The co-applicants for this project have a strong collaboration and are dedicated to joint stewardship of the memorial lighthouse monument. We follow the guiding principles of our organizations in all we do. Honoring the past, living in the present and looking towards the future is the vision statement of the Trinidad Rancheria. "Let us, O Lord, be large in thought and word and deed and remember in the big things we are all agreed." These are lines from the civic club collect. A lighthouse by the sea in the midst of a busy harbor is the perfect location for the memorial lighthouse monument, dedicated to honoring the lives of fishermen, guardsmen and others lost or buried at sea. Since 2017, the community has generously donated to help the club raise funds for this project, to which they feel a personal connection. This includes individuals, couples, organizations, businesses, artists and musicians, all contributing to preserving the lighthouse and establishing a permanent new home as records of the friends of the memorial lighthouse demonstrate in the packet. Approximately 75 letters of support have been submitted in favor of this project, including letters from four organizations: McKinleyville Rotary Club, the Greater Trinidad Chamber of Commerce, the Trinidad Lions Club and the Trinidad Bay Fishermen's Marketing Association. Some letters highlight the importance of the lighthouse as an iconic historic structure that is vital to the identity of Trinidad and the North Coast. Many share touching stories about what the memorial lighthouse means to them as a monument to their loved ones. The following is a quote from a husband whose young wife passed away in 2016. "I have made the annual trip to the Trinidad Memorial Ceremony, which takes me about eight hours one way. I find comfort and peace when I arrive in Trinidad and attend the memorial because I get to see our names inscribed on the wall together, hopefully for eternity. It is hard to hold back tears as I write this letter and this is why I support the Trinidad Memorial Lighthouse Project and hope you can find it in your heart to do the same and understand that it means so much to so many families that have lost a loved one." The memorial lighthouse is gone from its former historic site, but with your support, it will rise again in the harbor. Please help fulfill the original purpose of the memorial lighthouse to honor the past and serve as a beacon of hope for the future.
Thank you very much, Ms. West. I appreciate that.
Can you wait just a minute?
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's loading.
Okay, sorry.
I hadn't done that yet. And then, whoops, let me see if I can get it to forward this way. There we go. We thank the planning commission for your consideration of this permit. And if Jacqueline Carmison, Hostler Carmison is here, I would like to introduce her for her co-applicant presentation. It's going to be Shirley Maus, I understand. And then, following that, we will be happy to answer questions.
Okay, that would be great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Unfortunately, Jackie couldn't be here this evening. She has a family medical issue. And I just want to say that this project has been ongoing for quite some time. And the Rancheria fully stands behind our partners, the civic club, in the completeness of this project. And we, as a tribe, not only as the government, but as tribal members, also support the project. And we have staff on hand to answer any questions tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Laus. All right, with that, I'm going to bring the discussion to the commissioners and feel free to ask, direct your questions to staff or to Ms. West or Ms. Laus as appropriate. And then we're going to, after that, open to public comments. Are there any burning questions? Miss Commissioner Johnson? Sorry. And then Commissioner Tom Hopkins. Commissioner Johnson, yeah, you're on mute. There you go.
So, thank you. I just wanted to get some clarification of a couple of items. It's my understanding that in reading the MOU that was referenced in the staff package and other information tonight, that as I see it, the MOU is only for the removal and relocation of the Trinidad Memorial Lighthouse and doesn't address a permanent location, as I understand it. Am I reading that correctly?
That was my interpretation. Maybe someone from the Rancheria or the civic club could comment?
Yes, it was to expire once the lighthouse was moved. It was, however, used because of the cooperating stakeholders in determining those serving on the site advisory committee for the selection of the permanent site. And that's why we referenced it.
So a follow-up question to that, Jan, would be, do you have any sort of formal agreement with your co-applicant, the Rancheria, in terms of roles and responsibilities moving forward with this project?
It has been discussed. We, we don't have anything in writing yet, but we understand the parameters and we expect to develop such as an agreement before construction begins.
Thank you.
And Shirley, would you like to address that?
Well, I, I think maybe Jonas Savage might be able to address any onsite agreements that we might need. But at this time, the, our written agreement wasn't necessary to be complete to do this stage of the approvals.
No, I, I understand. I was more or less just to understand a little bit of background and, and see how this project would move forward if approved.
We have regular meetings between the Rancheria and the civic club and we're in quite regular email contact.
Great, okay, thank you. Let's see, I have several kind of more technical questions. I think I'll address those after we have public comment. Thank you.
Okay, okay, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Hopkins, do you raise your hand?
Oh, I was just, I just wanted to, I guess, public comment will come out. I wanted to hear what the ancestral society had to say in regards to this and, you know, stewardship, honor the, honor the past and serve as a beacon for the hope for the future. I'm hoping we could all figure out a way to work together to make something happen.
All right, yes.
So I look forward to hearing that and that's all. Thank you.
Yes, I'm definitely gonna, thank you. Yeah, we're definitely gonna call on tabs. Commissioner Stockton? You're on, you're on mute, Diane. You're on mute, Diane.
Well, I always have these. Comments about directions. Okay, so. I'm concerned about the signage. So when you're talking, you know, the club and the Rancharia about signage. I'm at the beach probably five days a week, you know, looking at the traffic, looking at the beach, looking at the trail to the head. And I know the signage on the building is beautiful. I like that. Somehow we need some kind of signage. Don't climb on the bell, don't climb on the railings. It there needs to be some specific signage besides. The what's on the front, which is very nice. And I've been down there a lot this summer. People have been on the bell. And the kids are up there, they're taking pictures and you know, it's still, it's still standing in a pretty good. Shape besides the signage, I'd like to see the Rancharia. Put some arrows with paint for directions of traffic. Okay, so you go in this way, you go out that way. And I know that's going to help because. In one of the reports, and I think it was Trevor, she talked about maybe not being a lot of traffic because of spring and summer. Well, that's not true. We are one of the greatest places in the world now and everybody's here and that's fine. And the people that lost everybody, the historical significance, we need everybody to come. So the other thing I was thinking besides the security. Is the sheriff that works for the city. Needs to be on board with what's going on for security, you know, maybe a couple trips down there during the day. And I don't know. You know exactly what his enforcement ability is, but there's beach pier and restaurant traffic all day. Okay, so I have one more. Comment. Oh, and then the cultural monitors are really important. So perhaps we can get one from the Rancharia, the Uroch Tribe and the. Ancestral Society and then everybody can, you know, feel like they're part of what's going on. Okay, so I'm glad the stormwater will be done this year. And then if we get all the okay's, we can go on, you know, with the lighthouse. In two thousand twenty two. So I think that's it for right now. Just those little signage issues from Diane. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Stockton. Commissioner, hey, can I have any questions or comments at this point?
At this point, no. When we come back from public comment, I too have some technical stuff and we'll see if Commissioner Johnson crosses stuff off my list too, so.
Yeah, I have a few things like that as well, so I'm gonna hold those as well. I think. My biggest concern probably at this point, so I see a lot of work has gone into this and I know how time consuming. These kinds of activities are and just getting it to this stage and the packet is quite complete. I have a few technical questions. My concerns really, I think Trevor kind of called it out. So. The comments from the Tri Ancestral Society and then most recently the last letter we got from the Uroch Tribe. But shortly, ten minutes before the meeting, I would like to delve into the cultural sensitivity a bit more. I went down to the Aldous Close. I went down to the site today. It's not like I haven't been there before, but I went there today and spent some time taking pictures, talking to a few tourists who were in the area and just. Kind of getting a feel for what the possible impact could be. And I'm afraid I don't. I don't quite see it yet and I'd like to hear more about that. So I think for me, that's the main, main kind of broader issue at this point. Everything else looks quite good. All right, so with that, I think this is a good segue then to open to public comments. And I do want to remind everyone because we have a large group. And we have read the letters that were presented to us. So, but you may have things you want to add. And so with that, we're going to try to limit to about three minutes. Angela is going to be our, our timekeeper. And with that, let's open up and please raise your hand if you'd like to comment. If you have no way to raise your hand, you may also, I should point out, come off mute and just give us your name and, okay, there we go, Mr. Kenny.
I always have to go first, but I don't mind.
Thanks for kicking us off.
Good evening, friends and neighbors. I did put in a short email comment, so I hope you've seen that. And first thing I would say is I hope you can. Give this approval tonight. The Civic Club has been working hard to raise money for this project and they have highly paid professionals here tonight. And I don't think it's fair to them to ask them to come back another time and have to incur more cost along those lines. Everybody's had a full and fair opportunity to comment on this and you have all the comments. So. After I put my comments in, I was thinking a little bit about the lighthouse and you know, what does it symbolize? I think the only thing it really reasonably symbolizes is people on the shore trying to help people out on the water. Lighthouses go across all cultures. They're ancient. They're ancient concepts that started out with a bonfire on the beach. Those are the first lighthouses. And so it's a human thing. It's not a cultural thing. And. The project obviously satisfies all the technical requirements. You're never going to be able to please everyone with any given thing, but I think this project has a great deal of merit. Should be approved tonight. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Kenny. All right, other public comments. I have to say I'm a little surprised. I expected more public comments. I particularly would be interested if anyone feels comfortable. I know it's sometimes difficult to speak for. An entire group of people, but if someone wanted to speak to the cultural sensitivities of this project. I think it would be beneficial and might enlighten, be enlightening for, for folks.
This is Sarah from the Tri Ancestral Society.
Hi, Sarah.
Hi, so I don't know that it's appropriate to discuss cultural sensitivities in an open public meeting. But that's a really good use of government to government meetings, right? Like that's what they're designed for. And I think that that's what the Uroch Tribe was asking for, so that they can discuss those cultural sensitivities. Because that's where it's supposed to happen. And I would just like to say that the Tri Ancestral Society gave its recommendation for placement at Saunders Park in two thousand seventeen. The response at that time was that. The only site that met the needs of the memorial lighthouse was its previous location on Civic Club property and that there was absolutely no way to put it anywhere else and no other. Site would be able to host it and it was just impossible to move it anywhere else. But you know, through a tremendous amount of effort from lineal descendants. We got things rolling to bring community awareness to the sensitivity of that location so that we could find a new location. And I think to say that we haven't participated at all, we've been participating for a very long time. This is an old conversation. I know that there's a lot of. There's a lot of new people that don't know the history. But I think that there's enough people that still remember that this has been a problem for many, many years. And we have made suggestions over the years of other places it could be moved to. But we didn't change our recommendation from two thousand seventeen and that was made to the city and to SHN. And so, you know, it's, it was in a meeting, you know, we did express that it didn't change. And so we didn't feel that we were supposed, you know. We didn't know that, you know, we needed to keep. Giving the same recommendation through two thousand eighteen and in two thousand twenty one, I got a letter from Patty. Inviting me and the chairperson of the Tri Ancestral Society to meet with her. But I couldn't tell if it was a social meeting or what. I asked for clarification and none was given. And I invited her to come to a Tri Ancestral Society Board Meeting. I asked her if it was in regard to this project. Because I thought, you know, if it is, like it's really important that we talk about it. Because we didn't know where the Civic Club was at in the project. And, you know, the invitation wasn't accepted. So, you know, yes, there was a lot of public meetings and no, we're not going to go to a public meeting. And write on a public board sensitive cultural information. That's not where that's supposed to be had. That's, that's what government to government meetings are for and that's what the Uroch Tribe was requested. And I think that that's an appropriate use of that. The Civic Club does have a relationship with the Uroch Tribe. They were part of the MOU. And so, you know, going to them and talking to them, you know, outside of these public meetings is probably good too. But I know that that, you know, it would have been helpful if the Tri Ancestral Society had been. You know, talked to as well and our invitation to come to our board meeting was accepted. And I think that, you know, if we had more communication between the two entities, I think that that would be really helpful.
All right, thank you very much. I understand the sensitivity of speaking about the specifics of the cultural sensitivity in a broad forum. So. Appreciate you adding your comments and thoughts, Sarah. Thank you. Are there other public comments?
This is Rosie Claiborne with the Uroch Tribe. I'm the Tribal Heritage Preservation Officer. And so I do kind of want to echo a little bit what Sarah just said. Our letter did come late because we didn't get notification that it was on the meeting tonight. So we do apologize for that. But you know, like Sarah's saying, like it is wildly inappropriate and it's actually against the law to discuss cultural resource specifics in an open meeting. I pointed out several inconsistencies with the cultural resource, you know. I don't even know what to call it. It's a blurb, but it becomes really frustrating as a tribe, you know, to request us to come and do. Comment as the public because we are not, we are a federally recognized tribe and there are laws that set up with city governments in order to do consultation. And we have to follow those. As far as SEQA and complying with SEQA, I don't think that this project can not do a SEQA study. Or be exempt from that because it does have impact to cultural resources and we would be able to discuss that. Had we been able to set up a meeting, a government to government meeting with the city of Trinidad. And that's kind of all I have for now is that we need to have more of those discussions before anything's decided.
Okay, thank you very much. And we are, we are on receipt of your letter and, and I was able to read it before the meeting, but, but I. Yeah, would like to spend a little bit more time on this. Okay, other public comments?
Can I speak now?
Yes.
I'm Patty Fleischner. I'm on Katrina's computer because I don't have. I'm Patty Fleischner. I'm historian for the Trinidad Civic Club and president of Trinidad Museum Society. The March note that I wrote to Sarah. To invite her to lunch or to meet in a private forum where at the museum was, was personal. I feel that after years, we've, I've extended. Peace offerings to Sarah and they have been consistently rejected and. There was nothing cordial about Sarah's or Ms. Akana's response to my invitation to, to meet privately. I have a strong. Respect for her grandfather Axel Lindgren Jr. And his sisters. Ally Lindgren and Wilda Galachi, who are the elders of the Tri Ancestral Society. They've been most helpful and instrumental in making our museum a success. And I would still love to share time with Ms. Akana. And any other member of the Tri Ancestral Society or the Uroch Tribe or the Rancharia at the museum. To show the, the beauty of the culture that we consistently show every day. My private correspondence inviting Sarah to a meeting was distributed to everybody, probably on this call. The City Council, the Coastal Commission, the Coastal Conservancy, I regarded it as private correspondence between Ms. Akana and myself. And I don't like talking about this because I, I have no animus. I have only appreciation for the tribal culture. And I feel that many distortions and many misunderstandings have occurred. And it would be wonderful to put some of those distortions and misunderstandings and ill feelings to rest. And I think it could be done. We're all. Humans and appreciate each other deeply. There, I have a very large file here of. Invitations from the Civic Club and personal ones to get together. I have quite a large stack of emails here. One of the ones in. September thirteenth, twenty first, it was Dear Sarah. This was, excuse me, it was in. Nine thirteen nineteen seventeen. Dear Sarah, members of the Civic Club Memorial Lighthouse Preservation Committee are meeting with SHN engineers, the city planner. A representative from the Coastal Commission and city representatives to discuss SHN's recommendations for stabilizing the lighthouse area potentially compromised. By the erosion to the west of the Civic Club's forty five by fifty parcel. I just called your father, that would be Axel Lindgren III. To invite him to join the discussion. I hope that you might be available to attend as well. Meeting is at the Club Room Town Hall on Wednesday, September twentieth at ten AM. Best wishes, Patty. There are many other communications like this that have gone unacknowledged and since I wouldn't bring this up at all except Ms. Claiborne has interjected my name. My name has been. It's character assassination really at a whole assortment of public and private meetings. And it's consistently hateful and there is nothing I would like more than a dinner or a luncheon or a meeting. Together with. Any and all of the Tri Ancestral Society, but it's a private meeting. It's not government to government. It's based on my. Forty two year relationship with Sarah's grandfather and her wonderful two aunts whom I adore. And I would like to have a wonderful, long lasting relationship with everybody in the quite remarkable Lindgren family. I guess that's enough. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you very much, Ms. Fleischner, for your comments. All right, other public comments? I see no more public comments, so with that, I'm going to bring it back to the commissioners. I think this would probably be a good time for some of those technical questions. If I might just start out with a quick one, I think. Trevor, I want to ask you about the SEQA. We, can you, I know you already explained it, but can you explain again why this wouldn't require SEQA? If you don't mind.
So, yeah, you know, it's a. You know, it's a relatively small project in terms of SEQA, so there are exemptions for construction of small new, new structures. And so it clearly falls under one of those categorical exemptions. However, the exemptions, there are exceptions to, to the exemptions. One of them does include. Um, one of them does include, um, impacts to historic, uh, resources. Um, there's also, there's cumulative impacts. There's, um, unusual circumstances. Um, a variety of, of exceptions. Um, generally, um, you know, a project that is ordinarily insignificant and its impact on the environment may, in a particularly sensitive environment, may be significant. Therefore, these classes are considered to apply in all instances, except where the project may impact an environmental resource of hazardous or critical concern where designated, precisely mapped and officially adopted. Um, and then, like I said, there's, you know, i- if there are, in general, if there are significant impacts, cumulative impacts, um, and then to, to historic resources. Um, you know, the, and then the thing with, with, one of the things with SEQA is that, um, you know, the decisions on, on SEQA, there, there's various decision points for SEQA. One is, you know, determining an exemption. Um, if an exemption doesn't apply, then, then you do an initial study. Um, and then do a negative declaration or a mitigated negative declaration. If no significant impacts are found, um, if there are potentially significant impacts, then, um, an environmental impact report is prepared. Um, none of those, I mean, SEQA doesn't necessarily mean you can't have a project with, with impacts, just, um, but they are supposed to be, um, you know, reduced to less than significant or to the extent feasible. Um, in addition, for, for SEQA, SEQA decisions, um, need to be based on substantial evidence. That's the, the court, um, standard of review, um, which, um, substantial evidence, um, let's see, is defined as reasonable assumptions based on facts and expert opinion supported by facts. Um, it does not include argument, speculation, unsubstantiated opinion or narrative evidence that is erroneous or inaccurate or evidence of social or economic impacts, which does not contribute to or not caused by physicals, um, impacts on the environment. Um, and as I mentioned, uh, an initial, an initial study was prepared for this project that supported that there aren't um, any significant impacts or unusual circumstances. Um, and so that's what the city was basing, that's what city staff, um, has been basing their determination that the project is exempt on. Um, you know, s- since then, again, um, letters from, from the, the Chirai and, and the Yoroc from, um, have brought up that there are potentially significant impacts. I just don't, I don't know the specifics of what those impacts are. So it's difficult to, to make a, a determination on how they might apply to SEQA at this point.
Understood. All right. Thank you very much. Um, I have one other quick question regarding the height of the structure. So, um, it's the, the lighthouse that's down there now is 18 feet. Is that correct? And then this new, uh, structure would be, it sounds like eight feet plus 10 feet. I'm sorry. It's 26 feet total, right? So.
I believe it's 27 feet from the base of the foundation, um, to the top of the lighthouse.
Okay. So 27 feet of that eight feet is the concrete foundation?
That's correct.
Okay. That's all. I just wanted to make sure I understood that. Thank you. It was a basic question. All right. Commissioners, I'm sure you have other, other questions. Commissioner Johnson, I saw you come off mute.
Um, sure. Uh, there, there was some inconsistencies regarding landscaping. And I believe that the city engineer highlighted those, and I think that those can be resolved. My only concern was that the erosion control plan was based on the staging area to be, uh, in a different location than what I think is planned, uh, really planned, if you will. So my question is, with, uh, the change in the staging area, will the erosion control plan also change? Because it looked to me like a lot of it was intended to prevent water from, if you will, flowing down the main road. Uh, and, uh, that still may be necessary, but it's not clear to me that the erosion control plan would have to change as well.
Yes. So, um, yeah, and that was, um, one of my comments as well as different plan sheets show the staging area to be in different locations, one to the south, um, east and one to the southwest. So it is going to be the southwest on the gravel portion of the parking area. The erosion control shows it to be in the southeast on a paved area. So yes, the erosion control would be different. Um, construction is planned for non-rainy season. So hopefully erosion control won't be too much of an issue. But that is something that, that is one of the things that the um, city engineer is going to have to approve and sign off on prior to construction.
Okay. And, and, and speaking of the city engineer, he, he itemized, I don't know, about a dozen different issues that he wanted to have resolved. And I realize that at this stage of the process, they, they don't, they're not reflected in the drawings or the package. But is, is there any, uh, of those issues which, uh, have not been agreed to or that there are controversial? Uh, I just want to get a feel that we're, that, that, uh, the, the city engineer will be satisfied at some point with the, with the design.
That's prob- I'd, not that I have heard of, but that might be, um, a question for the, um, the applicant's engineer.
Right here. I, I didn't see any problems with any of those comments. I'm sure we can incorporate all those into the plans and address them.
Great. Thank you. I'm just looking at my notes here. Um, I, I also just wanted to make certain that, uh, to confirm that the TML itself will not be accessible because it's on this large structure. So there's no stairs leading up to it. It's, it's, um, not accessible to the public via stairs or anything like that?
Well, it is accessible. There's a, there's a ramp from the path, um, that goes to the, to the structure. So it is accessible.
To the upper level?
Yes.
Okay. I just wasn't clear, I guess, from the illustrations and the, and the plans that I saw. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay. That's, that's all I have for right now. I'd like to, I'd like to, uh, though, uh, be able to come back in afterwards and maybe make a couple of comments. Thank you.
Absolutely. Other comments, Commissioners? Commissioner Stockness? Need to come off mute, Diane. There we go.
So this one's for Josh. Um, is the, um, structure ADA compliant?
Yes, from the, from the path, um, the path that we're creating, um, to the structure, it's all meets ADA grades and is compliant.
And up, up the ramp to the actual lighthouse?
Uh, I was just looking at our project area. So, um, it's not, um, accessible to there. There's the, where we started from the public path, um, where we connected to the structure and it's ADA compliant from there to the rest of the structure.
Okay. Thank you.
So Josh, so are you saying there's a ramp to that platform then above the, above the foundation?
Yeah.
Or just to the base, to the memorial part?
No, there's a, a ramp to the platform adjacent to the lighthouse. The, yeah, the 3D rendering we did was on the side. So it did go that ramp. So.
And then there's, there's a fenced area or, right?
It has railing on the top.
Yeah, railing. That's what I mean railing. Right.
You have other questions, Diane?
Um, not right now. Maybe at the end here.
Okay. Aaron or Tom, any questions you'd like to ask?
Cheryl, I did want to note that, uh, once you're done with the commissioners, Susan Rotwine had wanted to speak, but she didn't have a chance to.
Ah, okay. Apologize. Apology, Susan. I will, yes, we will cut, open to public comments as soon as the commissioners are done. Commissioner Hopkins?
Um, I look forward to hearing what she has to say. I also think it's ironic that it is a memorial and, and people are, are, I mean, it's, it's memorial for a lot of things. It's the healing of the past. And we should be thinking about how, what the top's going to look like also while this is being done, maybe. Um, I, 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 the, it seems like it's a lot of concrete to me, but designs are made and, uh, I really liked the feeling from the old one where you went into an area with plaques. Um, I have relatives that have the plaque up there and that's just what, it was part of like going into or being buried instead of being a something, it's, it's a fake lighthouse, you know, it's a beautiful fake lighthouse to me. But it is a, a place where a lot of, uh, you know, really precious memories are held. And, uh, so that's, I like, I don't know, I, to me, I think that, uh, I'm wondering if the design is set in stone at this point and if maybe something can be worked out with the players all talking with each other. Maybe something can be, um, figured out to move forward and with this and this top site also at the same time. If everybody's sitting down and talking. So, uh, that's it. Look forward to hearing what else everybody says.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Hopkins. Commissioner Hakenin?
Yeah. Sorry about that dramatic, uh, camera drop there. Uh, I guess I do, I have a couple of things that I jotted down. Um, first referencing just the SEQA issue. I guess the, the 15303, uh, category three exemption, that's because it's considered a new construction. Is that a fair assessment, Trevor? Is that why it seems to fit into that category? And I, I, I know it's not.
Yeah, I mean, yes, I, I did, um, I waffled a little bit between the 15301, which is for modifications to existing structures. But because it was moved there sort of under an emergency permit and then as a temporary permit, um, it's never been permanently permitted. And so I thought the more appropriate one was, you know, to look at it as a new structure.
And as I kind of tried to delve into this, um, I didn't see anything for relocating a structure really within the categorical exemptions, specific to that as an example.
Um, yeah, no, I, no, I don't, um, not that I can recall off the top of my head.
Okay. Um, this next one may also be for you. I think this comes out of government code 65962.5 subsection three. And this is where it says, "A categorical exemption shall also not be used for a project which may cause a substantial adverse change in the significance of a historical resource." And I guess kind of my question on that one is, what is the definition of a historical resource? Um, and that's kind of what I'm personally wrestling with, with this decision tonight. Um, it, particularly in light of the comments and, and the letter that came in close to the end there, I, I have some concerns about that. Um, I don't know if you can speak to that at all?
Yeah, I mean, there are definitely definitions for, um, cultural resources, tribal cultural resources, historic resources. Um, they're all dealt with a little bit differently in terms of, you know, the, the traditional view is, you know, a, a direct impact in terms of, you know, disturbing the ground, um, and, and disturbing direct, you know, directly disturbing cultural resources. Um, however, tribal cultural resources have, have a broader, um, applicability and have to do with, um, you know, ceremonial kinds of locations. Um, a- and I'm, I'm not, um, fully versed on, on all the various definitions and, and how these might apply, which is why at this point I, I was suggesting continuing the discussion so that we could explore that and, and, um, understand that a little better. And, and what, because he, uh, you know, like Cheryl said, I, I don't really totally understand what the impact is. It, it appears to be a visual impact, but I, you know, I, like I said, I don't, I don't fully understand what the impact is or, or how to apply, um, the laws to that.
Okay. And then along those lines with the view, um, and the, you know, section 17 of our zoning, uh, for the city, 60 dot oh five oh, and I believe it's oh six zero, um, do you feel like this is kind of falls within that? Those are the view protection, uh, sections of our, of our MUNI code?
Yeah. So is that.
From also that this is definitely the kind of obvious that we're well past 100 feet of the study area and then lots on which identified historical resources that were ticking those boxes as well.
Yeah. So, you know, the, the findings are written pretty specifically. It's, it's not within 100 feet of, of the Chirai study area. It is within the 100 feet of the, the Memorial Lighthouse, obviously. Um, that, that's a tricky finding, but I think, you know, some of these findings are somewhat limiting. Um, you know, they were written in the seventies and so, um, you know, they don't necessarily get at, again, um, like tribal cultural places, um, and things beyond the village site that might be, um, important. And so I think, um, we need to look beyond the findings a, a little bit on, on this.
Okay. And then I think this last one, I think I'm giving, give you a break here, Trevor, uh, might be from Mr. McKnight, uh, the 25 foot max. I'm, I'm just trying to understand what it would take to be able to live within that and not require a use permit and, and why there's the uncertainty a- as far as, or maybe Trevor, this is back to you. If it is, I apologize, but, you know, why we can't just simply make it three feet or, you know, shorter in design?
Part of my, um, part of my direction in the design was to, uh, create a wall that can be used for the memorial plaques. And, um, the wall was, uh, to be eight feet tall, um, you know, basically people can walk up and present those plaques. And, uh, after we bumped everything up eight feet, it bumped everything up to 27 feet.
Okay.
That was just kind of my parameters for the project design. So.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Uh, that's all for now. Thanks. Now you're muted, Cheryl.
You know, uh, I was just saying, thank you for asking that question about the height. I had that question as well. And I'd like to also now, uh, open, reopen to public comment, uh, so that Ms. Rotwine can get her question, her comments in. Susan? Susan, are you still there? If you are, you're on mute. Well, maybe she gave up on us. If so, um, if anybody sees her, let me know. If you see her online. Oh, there you are.
muted. So give, give her one second.
Okay, dog.
Hello?
Hello. We, we can hear you now. Is she on mute, Angela? No?
No.
Su- Susan, can you hear us? We're having trouble hearing you. I'm going to, um, I'm going to go ahead and move on. Uh, but if you, uh, if you're able to get back in, just ping myself or Angela and we'll, we'll take your, your comment. All right, uh, Commissioners?
Hear me?
Oh, now we can.
Oh, sorry for all the technical.
There you go. Here on.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you. And, and I appreciate you letting me, uh, speak at this point. I'll, I'll keep it brief. I want to, um, really quickly echo, um, Bryce's comments from the beginning of the comments. Um, I think he hit the nail on the head on a number of issues. I also appreciate what you folks have been discussing in terms of the details that need to, uh, be worked out. Uh, between you and the, and, uh, Trevor, I think there are some details. But I do not believe that the city or the planning commission tonight should put up a decision to move forward on this application. I do agree that the city needs to be meeting government to government with the Yoroc tribe. And that is something that should be ongoing, not at the last minute, not because we're discussing this, but that's something that needs to go on. Again, though, that is not a reason to deny the project or delay it tonight. So I totally support what Bryce said. I appreciate Patty Fleischner's comments, the civic club and all that they have done for our city. And I encourage the commission to vote to move this project forward tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rotwine. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Rotwine. Thank you. All right, while I have public comment open, are there other comments anyone would like to make?
Hello, this is Shirley Laus at Trinidad Rancheria again. And I just want to remind the commission that the Trinidad Rancheria did have archaeological studies in both twenty eleven and twenty fifteen as cited in the staff report and that speaks towards the project site itself, which there are no cultural findings at the proposed site, which is located on already disturbed Phil.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Laus. All right, I see no other public comments. If anyone else does, let me know. Otherwise, I'm going to bring it back to the commission. So let's bring it back to the commission. Commissioners, what, what are your thoughts right now? How are you, how would you like to proceed?
Cheryl, I believe Jan West has her hand.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Thank you. All right, back to public comments, Jan, please.
Well, I'm asking about the procedure because my understanding was that the applicants had an opportunity to provide closing comments. And we have been not offered that opportunity yet. So if you're moving to a decision from the club, we would like an opportunity to make our final statement.
Sure. Go ahead. Yeah.
So.
We don't always do that, but I'm happy to do that. So please.
Well, we understood that was the nature of, of how it worked. So I wanted to first, before I give my prepared statement, address the issue of whether or not the permit should be continued to have a decision made at another time. I want to say that this has been an incredibly long process up until this point. If you can understand that it started in two thousand seventeen and this is two thousand twenty one. The club has been involved in nonstop fundraising in order to pay the bills that this project has generated so far, including eighty thousand dollars to move the lighthouse and over fifty thousand dollars for our engineer. So I don't think, I'd like to give a little better picture of how we envision the process going forward. For example, the next place for our permitting goes to the coastal commission. If the, if the permit were approved tonight, we would probably be able to be included in the August coastal commission. If there is a delay, that may push it back till November. The coastal commission, once we obtain their approval means then we are ready to go to the bidding and hiring process. So that would be, we would be provided assistance in that by our engineer. And that takes a process of approximately a month to get the bid bidding document ready, submitted to the public. Then there's a period of time where you analyze the bids and approve them. And in the end, hire a contractor. What's a problem is that these contractors are very busy now and they are making their schedules far in advance. So we cannot expect that if our process goes into February, that we are going to be able to hire a contractor in March to start building immediately. We need lead time. So after that, the construction hopefully will begin in the spring and summer, as mentioned, to avoid a lot of runoff. And the fact is that this COVID pandemic has been very challenging. It has impacted our ability to raise funds. It has also caused delays in construction, which are going to have significant financial impact. We have had a, but a series of budgets since November of last year. And our last budget, the prices had risen substantially. Our, our engineer estimated that those costs were approximately twenty percent higher than the previous budget estimates. And he is saying that the construction costs are skyrocketing and that delays will be have a huge impact on us. So not only that, but you know, all we're trying to do is fulfill our community service obligations to the people in our monument and for historical preservation. Our lighthouse itself is a historical resource. And we just urge you to consider that, you know, we are a small club of approximately thirty people. Most of us are significantly older than sixty five years old. And this has not been an easy process, but it is one that we are dedicated and committed to. With your permission, I'd like to just go through a few other statements that are from the prepared document.
So I'd like to, yes, I'd like to wrap up if we can at about seven forty, so we have time for the commissioners to discuss and debate and.
Okay, this will be shorter than that.
Okay, thank you.
So the planning commission has received over seventy six letters in favor of the project, which demonstrate a high level of community support, as do the financial contributions we've received since two thousand seventeen. Clearly Humboldt County values the preservation of this historic landmark. Many supporters eloquently expressed their deep connection to the Memorial Lighthouse. The club conducted extensive research and analysis of twelve sites. And we truly appreciate all the stakeholders who participated in helping select the harbor location. This monument will have minimal lighting, preserve historic navigational aids, serve as a monument to those lost and buried at sea. So it really provides a meaningful purpose in our community. The, the lighthouse has been an iconic part of Trinidad for seventy two years. The club urges the commissioners to consider all the compelling evidence that we have provided, both in our documentation in the packet prior to the meeting and in our slide presentation. We tried to anticipate and answer as many questions as we could in it, in the presentation. We ask you to please help us fulfill the original purpose of the Memorial Lighthouse to honor the past and serve as a beacon of hope for the future. Thank you. We appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Ms. West. We really appreciate, I think I can speak on behalf of the entire planning commission. We really appreciate the fact that it's been four years in the making and, and a lot of thought has gone into this. At the same time, you know, it's our first time looking at the materials tonight, so just bear with us as we, as we work through our process. We'll get there. And so with that, I'd like to go back to the commissioners, please, and commissioners, let me know how you're, how you're feeling right now. I don't want to put anybody on the spot, so speak up if you have a kind of thoughts on this. Commissioners' office?
Well, I'm ready to make a motion. That's where I'm at. So let the other commissioners make some comments and then I plan to make a motion.
All right, other comments, commissioners, Commissioner Johnson?
I'll, I'll, I'll make some comments. You know, we've been here before, at least I have been here before, and then any decision that we make tonight is not going to satisfy the entire community, that's certain. And, and in, in some ways, it's unfortunate, but that's the way it goes. The, a, a couple of observations that I've made here is that it, it's certainly clear that the Memorial Lighthouse owner and the property owner are willing to move forward in this particular location. The project's on private property and as we all know, there's significant development already there. There's a vacation rental facility, there's public bathrooms, parking lots, a restaurant and buildings that support the peer operations. And whether we like it or not, the reality of it is that that development is not going to go away. So it's a little frustrating to not really understand and, and I, I don't, I admit that I don't understand completely the cultural resources and the cultural issues that have been raised tonight. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to read the Yurok letter tonight, so I, I don't know what's in that. But, you know, in, in terms of looking at this project and I would, I, I also look at the entire area down there. And I, I do know that there is a process underway to upgrade and improve signage with a, I think it's even going to be a little kiosk there at the trailhead for Trinidad Head. And, and you know, I, I think we need to take a look at these opportunities to be able to tell the, the whole Trinidad history. You know, we're looking at part of the history tonight with the Trinidad Memorial Lighthouse. There obviously is another story that needs greater telling and that's been talked about tonight as well. And I would really want the parties involved to take the opportunity to look at this whole area holistically and be able to tell the whole story of Trinidad down in that, in that area. The, the other, as I said earlier, I, I have not had a chance to read the, the most recent letter. I don't know what it contains. I know there might be some concerns in it. It's my understanding that this is not the final approval process in that while the city will be approving or not proving, approving a certain thing, certain elements of the project, it will go to the coastal commission for the final approval authority via the CDP. And I would encourage everyone that if there are issues that we have not had a chance or an opportunity to look at, that, that, that we are made aware of what they are, because I, I, I don't think that we have all the information that, that maybe people think that we do. My last comment, and this is one I've said before and I'm going to say it again, and I get so frustrated when, when this comes up, but I again encourage the city and the other members of the Cheer Eye management team to work towards completing the transfer of the village site as agreed. I clearly understand that there are tremendous obstacles and problems and issues that need to be resolved. But again, I would like to see the city and all parties involved take a more holistic approach to what we're trying to do with this area and make that transfer possible as soon as, as soon as possible. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Haken, Haken, any comments? Commissioner Hopkins? Before we move on, okay. I see none. I'm, I'm just going to make a brief comment. I, I agree with everything Commissioner Johnson just said. I have honestly gone back and forth on this one. I came into this with an open mind and I'm really fairly undecided at the moment. And the reason for that is that it's not the first time that the planning commission has faced a decision where everything looks good on paper and it seems to make a lot of sense, but there are parties critical to the discussion who've not been included, not for any fault by the applicant, but either because of city just, you know, government to government communication is, is lacking. But I, I, as a planning commissioner, I don't know that given what I have here and with the absence of a sequoia requirement, that I could say that 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 would hold me up from moving forward with a decision. This decision can be appealed to the city council. It, it can be, as Richard described, the CDP will go to the coastal commission. I think it's been, I think it's been a very long and arduous process for the the civic club. I appreciate the Rancheria being willing to, to host the lighthouse. But I, you know, just on a separate issue almost, I'm, I'm frustrated that some of those discussions haven't taken place, but anyway, that's my, my only comment. Diane? Did you want to make your motion?
No, not yet. Not yet. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so the planning commission meets every third Wednesday of every other month. That's always been the way. I've been a commissioner for seven or eight years. The parties that aren't involved in the discussions, those meetings are always out there. Everybody's welcome. And I would like to invite the society, the Rancheria's been involved, some of the other people have been involved, Shirley's been involved. It's been out there for people to come and talk, not just the night of the meeting. Okay, and Ellie Lindgren came to one of our meetings a year ago, February, and she talked about making this great peace park where the lighthouse was. And I, I would encourage that as another way of getting some of these groups together and not always, I don't know, I guess it has to be government to government. I don't know. I, I wasn't sure who was a government and who wasn't in these, some of the tribes. But I'm, I'm ready to move forward. I have been on the commission. I did the, you know, the site thing. We did the, you know, gave them part of a permit to move it. It was very emotional for not only the tribes, but the civic club and us community members. Some of us have been here forty five years. I mean, and we've been in Humboldt County our whole life. So with that, I'm going to make a motion. All right? Based on the information submitted in the application and included in the staff report, the civic club report, public testimony and planning commission discussion, the project is consistent with applicable regulations and I move to adopt the information and use permit, design review and view protection findings in the staff report and approve the project as submitted and conditioned with numbers three and four, which would be cultural monitors, three of them, the Trinidad Rancheria, Yurok tribe and the Ancestral Society. And then of course, recommendations of the city engineer, because he has to approve, you know, the grading, the drainage, the erosion, you know, all that, that this Trinity Valley group has put together. I think we need to move forward. It's going to be the coastal commission, then it's going to be, it's, it's just going to be too many years. And it's beautiful, you know, it's, and I, I do. Okay, so that's it. That's my, my motion.
Commissioner Stockner's question, you said with conditions of approval, three and four. So are you saying just three and four or one through five?
I'm saying.
Just so we know what, what folks are voting on.
Let's see.
So.
Well, I think we know one and two. But if that has to be in there.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that you, that folks knew that, that we're saying they're, the motion is for. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that you you that folks knew that that were saying their uh uh the motion is for the one through five.
Okay, okay, correct.
I just wanna, i- i- it's fine either way. I just wanted to confirm with you.
Okay, yeah, I'll just go one through five then, if that's what the conditions are. I just, I I wanna see it move forward.
All right, so we have a motion.
I think it's gonna take a year to move forward.
Can I ask?
Yes.
Diane, on number three, I just wanna understand what you're suggesting. Uh currently, it reads about the uh cultural monitors from the Rancheria, the Yurok Tribe and or uh the Ancestral Society. You're modifying it to suggest that it needs to be all three distinctly separate, right? Not an and or. Is that, is that how you're modifying it?
I think they, that we need three and they need to work together. I think this would be very very good for the community and for the tribes.
And are the three you're specifying, then just to be clear, the Rancheria, the Yurok Tribe and then the
Yes. All right, and I see a question. Commissioner Hopkins has a question as well?
Well, I just, to me, it seems like there's a lot of unanswered questions. And I think bumping it one month would not be a problem and it might make everybody talk.
Okay, so you're you're advocating for a continuance, it sounds like, potentially, right? Okay. Is there a second to Commissioner Stockness's motion to approve?
Well, point, point of discussion then.
Yeah.
I know, I I I I'm certainly insensitive to the issue of the schedule. I I really am. I I realize that um I'm trying to get some work done at my house now and it's impossible. I understand it entirely. So uh I I believe that there certainly could be some benefit of of um some additional discussions and maybe some clarifications from several of the uh various organizations that need to participate in this to help us along with this decision. Um I my suggestion is that we not wait for another month. That we put the pressure on all of us, including the applicants uh and say if we can come back in two weeks and and be able to gather that information that we feel that we might need, or if we don't, then it'll help us make a decision otherwise. But uh I don't believe it's necessary to wait um a month. I think we can do it in two weeks. I would be willing to do that. Modify our schedule if we could do that and 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 proceed from there and and all all the participants can have an opportunity to weigh in and provide what seems to be a couple of holes in our discussion.
So I guess uh let me go back to city staff just quickly on that, on that, I that suggestion. Uh it sounds like what, there were some questions um regarding government to government discussions and then also a few questions, I guess, remaining on some of the city engineering questions and things like that. So some of the more technical things. But is it realistic to um is it realistic that we wouldn't be able to have those kinds of discussions in the next couple of weeks, I guess? I'm just, you know, thinking out loud here.
You know, I I don't think that you know, it's probably unlikely that government to government consultation could be arranged. I don't necessarily see that as as the answer. I mean,
Okay.
The really technically under the Brown Act, the city council can't meet as a body um in a closed session. So normally, you know, these kind of confidential matters are are dealt with at more of a staff level and, you know, and under CEQA and and AB thirty-two, that's that's generally a staff level consultation that occurs and that doesn't require government to government con- consultation. Um that that's specifically required for general plan amendments under SB eighteen. You know, I it it's hard to say what could happen in two weeks. At least we could try and and get some more information on specifically what the impacts are and get some some legal advice on on what that means to the city's process. I think we could do that in two weeks in terms of, you know, all the parties. You know, regardless of whether it's government to government or more at a staff level or just more informal. Um you know, that would be hard to do in a couple of weeks, but um you know, we we should, we should be able to at least have some additional information for you in in two weeks.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is uh we have a motion uh to approve. We have a suggestion to um to continue the item for more information either in two weeks or it could actually be a month um to our next meeting, depending on people, folks' schedules and so forth. So um do I hear a second at this point for the, so those are the two options on the table. So do I hear a second for approval tonight? I do not see a second, Diane, for approval tonight. Do we want to discuss a little bit more? Or how are you guys feeling?
Well, if if we're gonna discuss or can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So if we're gonna discuss, we need to do it in two weeks, like Richard said, we need the lawyer there. We need the people that wrote the letters, that have some issues and some concerns. We need to have more comments and not at at the last minute. You know, this is a volunteer job. This is a big issue and we have a lot of people in town. A lot of people are here and we need to fix fix this area, like we need to fix this, the the storm waters. So you know, I would agree for two weeks, I'm not gonna wait a month. I'm I'm gonna have house guests in a month. Okay, it's summer.
Yeah.
So we, we need to think about this as commissioners and I'm sensitive to all the groups involved, but there's been plenty of time for people to put their two bits in or or their comments or their letters. And you know, if you're out like I am every day because I live right in town, everybody's here. We need to get going and there are some concerns about construction, about, you know, what this engineer is gonna do, what the Coastal Commission's gonna do. I'm gonna be off the commission by the time this is done or the general plan. And I've worked hard. I would like to see it get going. And I I I would wait two weeks, which would be the thirtieth. Then we're gonna run into the July four and the summer. It's gonna be
So I do.
It's gonna be tricky. So commissioners, think about that.
Yeah, I didn't mean to interrupt.
My motion still, am I motion still on the floor?
Motion stands. Okay, uh Commissioner Hopkins?
I agree. I hear what you're saying and uh I'm hoping, I'm I'm wondering if maybe we should ask the players involved if they could get something done in two weeks. You know, if it's reasonable for a government, for a discussion to say, okay, is that a good site? Can we make, can we live with that site? What do we gotta do?
Yeah, I think the answer was that we didn't think that we could make that happen in two weeks, potentially.
So so then, if that's not the case.
That's what I'm hearing, yeah.
Then, yeah, we're, but will it happen in a month? That's I mean, whatever we have to do to help this community come together on something. And um so anyway, that's
I think, I think what we're hearing from the applicants and I I know um, I know that Ms. West was trying to speak again, but I really wanted to hold the discussion with the commissioner so that we can make a decision uh for just a few more minutes. Um I understand that um m- my understanding is that this, you know, there's been a lot of work put into this. It's been going on for four years. It is the first time it was brought before the commission tonight. However, uh it's not like we're not aware of it. Uh we have looked through the documentation. I have seen all the public comments. I do see, I didn't see seventy-five in favor. I saw sixty and fifteen against. Um but there were, you know, groups, so it's really hard to put a number and it's not a vote. I I do do not like the idea of deferring, you know, deferring just to be deferring, that you know, I don't think any of us wants to do that. So I think I, you know, we we feel the sense of urgency for a decision, but I need to make sure as a body that we're comfortable with where where we're going. So uh Commissioner Stockness still has a motion on the floor? And um do I hear a second? I'm tempted to second it to to put it to a vote, but I really don't wanna force folks to vote if they feel like they have don't have uh enough information. Uh Commissioner Stockness? I I apologize, but I think um at this point as as a chair, unless someone else wants to second, I I feel that we're gonna have to continue this discussion. So going once, going twice? All right, uh that's the decision uh by the Planning Commission. Um I do appreciate, I know how frustrating it is uh for the the folks that are the applicants. Uh I truly understand. It took me three years to build a house. I I, you know, I I feel your pain and and I really appreciate your patience with us. And then staff, I guess um Trevor or Eli, if you have a suggestion, if, you know, we could try to meet in two weeks. I understand Commissioner Stockness's concern about timing uh as we get into the summer months and so forth. Um or we can continue to the next meeting.
So my my suggestion would be to, you know, make a formal motion to continue the item and to continue it um to a a date specific time. So whether that is the next regular meeting, which would be July twenty-first. Um we do have a, I was actually I was thinking we might not get to the next agenda items tonight and I was actually going to suggest a meeting on the thirtieth anyway. We have an extra Wednesday in between our meetings. And so because that's the fifth Wednesday, it's, there's, there's not usually scheduling conflicts with, you know, meeting times and things like that. So if you guys have your um calendars in front of you and wanna set that as as the date, um you know, I'm I'm fine with with that.
Uh so your su- the suggestion is June thirtieth? Is that correct?
Yeah, well, I would say, like I said, it it should be, I would suggest making a formal motion to continue it and whether it's and and to make it date specific and
Okay.
whether that is. If if June thirtieth works for everyone, it it works for me. Um otherwise, it would be to the regular July meeting, which would be July twenty-second.
Yeah, so my my suggestion is to actually have a special meeting on uh the second Wednesday, which is July fourteen. Uh since today is um June sixteen, that actually would be four weeks from today. And uh I I think that the four weeks would make sense. Two weeks is too short and there's no reason to go five weeks. So I I would suggest having a special meeting on the sixteenth. Otherwise, at your regular meetings, uh you know, your regular meeting in July and then also if you wanna have one on the thirtieth, uh you can address, you know, the other issues that uh your normal business. So that would be my suggestion. That four weeks, I think, would allow us time to, in order to have some uh, you know, some constructive meetings.
All right, uh Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah, I I'm I'm perfectly okay with either scenario. I agree that two weeks is short. Uh but I think that one thing that we should be very clear about is what information do we wanna bring back to the table? And um I'll be honest, it's not clear in my mind right now exactly.
I was gonna bring that up, yeah.
With the with the the with the exception, two exceptions that I can think of right now, and that is, there still seems to be a little bit of 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 an issue regarding um CEQA. And and I think that can be arranged. I I mean, I I think we can talk about that and we can get our feel more confident in that e- area. And in the other area, which I honestly, uh as I said, I I don't have all the information in front of me is you know, what do we need to do to understand a little bit more about the cultural resources and how we address those? Those will be two things that I think we should bring back, but there may be others, so um certainly whatever anyone else wants to bring up.
Those are the two. I think Commissioner Hopkins also mentioned the design itself, but I don't know um that the Civic Club has the resources uh or the, you know, kinda desire at this point to go and take another look at that. Um but yeah, there were, there were, there was that one comment. So maybe just a little more about why that design was chosen and and the height, the height restrictions uh for the commercial zone not, you know, adhered to. But that I think would be a minor third thing. Commissioner Hopkins?
My point on that was that moving it up higher, it starts to compete with the hill. Or the, you know, it's like, if we maybe bring it down and make it more intimate, it wouldn't be such a big, broad, but I know a lot of work has been done and I appreciate that and it it looks great, but I I would really like to hear more of what um to help the other other folks kind of process this. And and yes, I know it's been going on for a long time, but maybe this two weeks or whatever will help just really focus it. And um I appreciate what everybody's done, you know. That's what I had to say.
Thank you.
And not, yeah, not to belabor the point, uh the the two concerns have been brought up as far as the CEQA and the um the cultural sensitivity and and the area reconciling those things for me personally, as well as the design. Um the twenty-five foot, I'm just curious if, you know, understanding if there was a desire for an eight foot, is there an option to? You know, we have our guidelines within the city limits for a reason. Um and I apologize that I'm new to this whole issue, but I'm also trying to do my best to represent everybody as a planning commissioner and make sure that I'm comfortable with the decision I'm being asked to make. Regardless of the fact that I know folks have tremendous blood, sweat and 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 equity effort in this. Um you know, and I just uh go back also to our, you know, the view protection criteria that structure is visible from beach or public trail and open space. I I don't know if this qualifies or if that even is applicable here, but ensuring that it's as visually unobtrusive as possible. So I'd love to hear more background on the design. Uh but I absolutely agree, if we do continue this, which it sounds like we are, we we have to put some criteria in place and and out of fairness and and deference to the equity and and effort that's been involved by everybody. Eventually, just move on it, you know, one way or the other, but I I guess that's kind of it for me right now.
Thank you, Commissioner Hakenin. All right, so I believe that the discussion is uh to have a special meeting on the fourteenth. Is that where we're at then, on July fourteenth?
I'd like to comment on that.
One sec, Diane, sorry.
That, you know, to have that a week before the regular meeting.
Yeah.
Um doesn't doesn't really work real well to be trying to put together a packet on the same week we're having a meeting. So
Yeah.
No, and and so, but we do have that extra week. So the seventh is another option. Um you know, if you wanna give it another week, but if three weeks isn't enough, then I would say just, you know, have it on the regular meeting on the twenty-first.
So I'm kind of inclined to do June thirtieth because I don't think that what we're asking is is too terribly onerous, although easy for me to say. But if a discussion is gonna take place, it seems like it could take place in the next two weeks. And I am sensitive to the fact that folks want us to make a decision and 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 we need to make a decision. So I I guess I'd go to you know, delaying it two weeks feels okay to me. Delaying it longer than that, then I'd wanna maybe revisit it, I guess. Yeah, Commissioner Stockness?
Okay, so um I wanna make a motion to um delay. We send my other motion. I'll make a motion to delay action and have a special meeting on June fourteenth to um discuss the issues that the commissioners brought up about um the project. I could go right now, but let's delay it for two weeks until June thirtieth. If we put it off longer than that, we're gonna lose the momentum.
All right, I second. A second thought?
I
Commissioner Hakenin?
Uh just a question, is the twenty-ninth point of discussion available? The thirtieth, I'm at work. Uh I don't have the ability to get that day off and this is important enough to me that I'd like to not have run the risk of getting interrupted by work.
The STR committee is meeting the twenty-ninth.
Uh how about the twenty-eighth? Or the first? Twenty-eight?
Twenty-eighth, I can make work, yeah.
Or or the seventh? What about the seventh?
No, the seventh, you know, that's in the middle of the Fourth of July. People are gonna be gone. People will be here. It's it's not good.
That was kinda why I was trying to, but I I'm happy to help and if there's you know, we can talk offline. I don't know if it's a violation of the Brown Act for a a planning commissioner to talk to the Yurok a planning commissioner to talk to the Uroch tribe, for example, or it's a TAS. It's not. Okay. So I'll tell you what, I will volunteer to have the, the discussion if, if TAS and the Uroch tribe are comfortable with that. A one-on-one discussion under non-disclosure or whatever it takes, so that I can at least have a better understanding of what the issues are, if, if that works. And I'm happy to do that. So the open invitation and I'll reach out. All right. So we are saying.
28th works perfect for me. I can work. Yes.
All right. So Diane, I guess you're revise, do you want to revise your, will that work for you to?
Well, that's not my best day. So someone else can make a motion.
Oh, okay. What about, hmm, all right. Do we want to just send it, send this out in a, a poll?
No, no, that, that takes all those things. Too much time. We need to make a decision and do it.
I make a motion that we.
Commissioner Stockness is, I'm sorry.
I thought the STR committee was meeting the 21st. Can Angela confirm that?
Yeah, I can confirm. They, the meeting was moved to the 29th. Normally they, they would have met on the 22nd, but originally they were thinking the council was going to meet on the 22nd. So they moved it to the 29th. It turns out that the council is actually going to meet on the 21st instead.
Okay. How about the first of July?
The 28th is.
That's the eve of the weekend.
I run it in my work conflict, but I'm just.
Just do the 28th and I, you know, I think I can get there.
All right. So I'm going to make a motion to continue the discussion on, on the design review, use permit and grading permit for the permanent foundation of the Trinidad Memorial Lighthouse to June 28th at 5:00 PM. It's a special meeting, right? And we'll continue the discussion there. And that I will reach out to the folks that I received the letter from, both at the Uroch tribe and the Tri Ancestral Society to see if they are open to having a discussion with me, so that I can help further this issue along. All right.
So are, are they invited to the meeting then? The special meeting open to the public?
It's open to the public. Absolutely. Yes. Everyone's invited. It's a public meeting. Everyone's invited. And, and I understand that there have been public meetings and invitations that have been extended in the past as well. I think the issue here is one of public meetings versus private. Okay. I know I, I can read the room and I know folks are, you know, I know there's frustration. I, I feel it. I understand it.
May I speak?
Yeah.
We have to vote, don't we?
Yes.
We need to vote before she can speak.
Yes, that's correct. Thank you for that point of order. So I made the motion any second.
I second.
Okay. I have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
There are no opposition. Okay.
And before I move back to public comments, just a quick question. So I take it from what we just discussed that we are moving, are we moving the ADU and STR discussions also out?
Well, that's up to you.
It's 8:15. Yeah. What do you guys?
Yeah. So that's up to you. I'm, you know, I'm happy to continue the discussion tonight. We would start a little earlier on Monday, but it's, you know, it's, it's Monday. Mondays are my favorite days, but, um, but you know, I'm, I'm open to what, whatever you guys, whatever works for you.
What do you guys want to do? Probably take a 15 minute break if we do do that.
A question for calendaring to our, our next regularly scheduled meeting. What are you anticipating? Assuming Planet Magical, we had covered everything tonight, resolved everything tonight and moved through all three items. What would have been on the next one if we were to defer the next two items to our next regular meeting? What's in jeopardy there? What conflicts? Cause I know we have a lot on our plate that we're trying to actually accomplish. And so.
Good question.
You know, again, like I said, if we, if we didn't get to the next two items, I was going to suggest a meeting on, on the 30th. Because for, for a couple of reasons. One, yeah, we have a lot on our plate this, you know, to get done this year. The, the ADU ordinance is, is grant funded. You know, the, the STR ordinance doesn't necessarily have, have a deadline. So maybe that one can be put off, but it's, it's one that we don't want to belabor for, for too many meetings. I guess is, is what we've talked about before. Yeah. Um, you know, I'm, I'm flexible. Whatever works. I I would suggest trying to continue to work on the ADU ordinance and, and not put that off until the regular July meeting, the STR, you know, by the time the STR, the next meeting happens, the STR committee will have met. So that you'll have a little bit more, more information at that time. Yeah. I guess you could also, if you're up for it, have, you know, hopefully a fairly short meeting on Monday, but also have a special meeting on, on the 30th for ADUs and STRs. So I'm, I'm, I'm open to whatever works for you guys.
What do you guys want to do? Do you want to take a break and maybe tackle ADU tonight? Are we feeling completely, I mean, I know it's been two hours and 15 minutes, so I'm, I'm fine either way. Let me do a quick round robin. Richard, what do you want to do? And Jan, I haven't forgotten you. I'm sorry. Thanks for your patience.
Yeah. I, I, I'm, let's go through ADU if everybody's willing.
Okay. All right. And well, okay. I think we're all nodding agreement. So Trevor, if that works for you. And so we'll, we'll have a break before that. But before we do that, Jan had a few comments, parting hot words for us.
All right. I would like to point out that this has been a five-year process, not four. That in that time, we think we have exhausted every possible site. As I mentioned, we researched and analyzed 12 sites. What possible outcome can you hope to resolve the differences between the two points of view tonight by postponing and costing the civic club an incredible amount of money through postponing another month? I don't think we can change our site. It's possible we could look at the height. You didn't seem to understand that the walls are eight feet tall. So we have room to put memorial plaques on.
Yeah. I think, I think we understood that. Thank you.
If the spire is one foot tall, you know, there's this little dingy point on the top of the lighthouse that we included. We're talking about a one foot height difference. Also Kelly, Cheryl, if you're going to be meeting with the rancheria and the Uroch tribe, are you also planning to meet privately with the civic club and the Trinidad Rancheria? And is there going to be a city meeting planned with all four of the entities? If we are trying to somehow come up with a miraculous solution to this dilemma?
Okay. I hear your, I hear your frustration. And one of the things that we're going to be looking for has, is the further guidance around some things like CEQA. So those are more technical details that the commissioners, as you, as you, you know, as you saw, did not feel comfortable with. As far as my offer to meet with, with TAS and the Uroch tribe, it's because they were in opposition. So I'm happy to meet with all parties. But I thought that the point of my offer was to meet with those who are in opposition, not those that are, who are in favor of the project, if that makes sense. So, and I'm not sure it's going to work anyway, to be honest, Jan. It was just an offer I made because I thought we could maybe get around the Brown Act issues and be able to understand what the cultural sensitivities were, because that was one of the key issues. And I don't think any of us who are currently in this discussion understand fully what, what's going on there. And evidently that can't be expressed in a public forum. So I thought it might help if I got a sense. But that's not why we're holding up tonight. And I, I want to make that clear. That's just one of the three things that the commissioners were concerned about. So. All right. With that, I'm going to go ahead and move us to break. We're going to take a 10 minute break Everybody have a nice, everybody have a nice cleansing breath. We're a popular group tonight. All right, let's see, we just need Diane and we'll get started talking about ADUs.
I have tremendous respect for those of you that have done multiple terms on the commission that have done this more than-
Are you talking, Aaron?
Yeah, is it not?
I can't hear you.
Uh-oh.
I saw you.
I heard you.
Yeah, you were off mute.
Me too.
Maybe it's me.
Probably. How about now, Cheryl?
Let me check Bluetooth.
Can you hear me now?
Can you hear me, Cheryl?
Can you hear us now?
Somebody say something.
Something.
Tess.
Hello?
Can you hear me? Can you hear me now?
I love that this is recorded. I can't hear you guys now.
Oh, no.
Any luck, Cheryl?
Can you hear us now?
Uh-oh.
Okay. I know you guys can hear me. I hope I can hear you.
Any?
Can you hear me?
No, I can't hear you. All right. Heads that malfunction, forget those. Let's go old school here with the laptop. All right, Trevor, when you're ready, do you want to kick us off with the ADU staff report?
Sure, if you can hear me. Can you hear me?
That's probably-
All right, I'm going to log out. I'm just going to go out and come back in. But feel free to start the staff report, but I'll be right back.
Do you guys want me to start the staff report or wait a minute for Cheryl?
I could start. Might as well. This is, this is pretty straightforward.
It hasn't been straightforward to me. But, but most of the sections I included this month are fairly straightforward, I think. So maybe that's what you're referring to.
Yeah, right.
So, yeah, just continuation from, from the last time, we decided to look at this in pieces. So I've added some more pieces. I have also updated the JADU regulations like we discussed. And adding the language from the regulations about the counter, counter and storage space. And taking out the specifics for that. So rework that definition. And then the sections that I added are highlighted in green. That's what the green highlights means. So there's a purpose and intent. That's pretty self-explanatory. We will also include a set of findings. The old ordinance had a set of findings. We'll want to review those, probably update some of those. Um, permits required. So this is just stating the, you know, what, what type of permits would be required. And just recall that probably almost all JADUs and then a subset of ADUs that meet a certain, certain standards are going to be ministerially approved. So it's not a coastal development permit. It's not a use permit. So I was just, you know, trying to think of a name of what the permits were. It could just be ADU and JADU permits. If we want to combine them, could be a second dwelling permit. That's what I have in there for now as, as a placeholder. And then, and then for, for an ADU that doesn't meet the set of standards that would allow a ministerial approval, then, you know, if it doesn't meet the size or height limit, then it would require a use permit. So someone can request an ADU that's larger, whatever, outside of those, those guidelines and get a use permit for that. Oh, and one thing I brought up here too is the issue of coastal development permits and septic improvements. So the coastal regulations do not exempt modifications to septic systems. Now, if it were truly a like-for-like replacement, you know, replacing lines, replacing a tank, that could potentially fall under repair and maintenance. But we've been really trying to encourage people to, you know, upgrade, you know, pits and redwood boxes and things like that. And to make them jump through our coastal development permit process, including all the notifications and the hearings and the expense has seemed counterproductive. So I've, I've resisted that so far. But I think with this ordinance, we're going to have to address that. And what I'm thinking is that we'll, we'll come up with a waiver process. So the Coastal Commission itself has a waiver process where for what they call de minimis development, development that doesn't have a lot of impacts, that's a, it's, it's not quite an administrative process, but it's more of an administrative process and it's kind of on the Coastal Commission's consent agenda. Someone can pull it if they want to. So I think we'll develop that. It's not going to be part of this ordinance because I think the waivers should apply more broadly than to just ADUs. But so I just wanted to bring that up and point that out. In terms of permitting procedures, again, fairly straightforward. I think the, the primary issue is that there are there, there's a sort of a blank section there for ADUs or JADUs that don't meet the, the standards. And we haven't gotten to the standards yet. And so, but I just want you to keep that in mind. And I think when we do get to those standards, it'll be nice to have this procedural stuff in context. But, you know, think about, you know, there's going to be you know, certainly height, there'll probably be some, some size. May, you know, maybe setbacks. Parking, so so for ADUs that meet all these standards, and then what are the standards that they can get a use permit to not meet? So, you know, it's not going to be any standard. We're not going to allow them to not meet septic requirements, for example. So that's just something to keep in mind. And that's sort of a placeholder in there now until we get to those standards. And then existing ADUs, this was a section from the old ordinance that basically followed state law. And there are provisions in the state law still for existing ADUs. So there's legal non-conforming ADUs that are allowed to continue. What this sets up is if someone has one that can meet current requirements and it's to someone's advantage to have it not be non-conforming, considered non-conforming anymore, then they could get a permit for their existing ADU. And then there's an opportunity. There's a grace period for people that have illegal ADUs to come to the city and try and get them permitted. And again, they have to go through the same, the permitting procedures that a new ADU would have to do and meet the same standards. And again, the question comes up is, are there standards that we would allow them to not have to meet? So that's, again, just something to keep in mind for future sections. Location of ADUs is going to be an issue that we're going to continue to discuss. I don't have a lot of new information on that. I did provide some excerpts from the water demand study that showed, you know, what, what we calculated for, for ADUs and how they fit into the city's remaining capacity at the water plant. But I also want to discuss with GHD a little bit about the infiltration issues and the groundwater modeling. And then also I, I'm, I'm trying to set up a time to go out with Gary Simpson, the geologist, who worked on the Lighthouse and a number of other projects in Trinidad. And we're going to try and map the bluff edge in Trinidad. And that's actually for a somewhat different purpose, but I think it might be useful for locating ADUs as well. So I will come back with that additional information and just you know, from the water demand assessment, you can see that ADUs don't, don't generally have high water demand. There are some exceptions. We analyzed, you know, with an assumption of 36 ADUs. One thing that the Coastal Commission mentioned is, is that communities have capped ADUs in the coastal zone to, to limit impacts on coastal resources. So that might be something to consider. I don't imagine that 36 is a very restrictive cap. I, I'm not sure that we would ever see that many ADUs in Trinidad. That wouldn't include JADUs. And so that might be a reasonable cap. And if the city wants to revisit that in the future, we can do that. It's certainly plenty of room to meet the city's housing goals and requirements. So that would be something to consider. Mendocino County currently has an ADU ordinance before, I think it's a, it's still at the staff level of the Coastal Commission, but it is going to be an ADU ordinance that will apply to the coastal zone within Mendocino County, including the town of Mendocino. So I think that one will, I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing the Coastal Commission's comments on, on that ordinance. I think it might, you know, provide a good model and guidance for, for Trinidad. So I'll be keeping an eye on that and reporting back to you on that. So that's the new information I have to provide. And I'm happy to take questions, comments, and suggestions.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments for Trevor, Commissioner Johnson?
So I'll, I'll kick it off. So Trevor, thanks for including the two letters from the Coastal Commission. And bless their heart. So in your, in just the top level opinion, are we pretty much on track to agree to what they have basically said in the letters?
Well, I, I was actually, it was interesting looking at those letters because there was, there were some things I had clearly forgotten. You know, there's a lot of, I think it's the, the January letter brings up a lot of questions about the ASBS and compliance with the ASBS. And I think that's, I mean, there's one to me that seems slightly outside of the Coastal Commission's purview. That's not their regulations to enforce. I can understand them wanting to make sure the city is in compliance with that. But also the city has done a lot of stormwater projects. And, you know, they bring up the fact that septic systems could, you know, might be considered a discharge to the ASBS, but, you know, the, the Water Board has not made that yet, connection, at least not officially. And so that is not, you know, that's a, that would be a, a non-point source discharge. So the, the prohibition on discharges into the ASBS is for point discharges, basically like pipes and outfalls. So, which, which, you know, that would not be septic system. So that's not regulated under the ASBS Ocean Plan yet, though bacteria is a constituent that, that we monitor for in the ASBS. But there are other sources of bacteria. So so, yeah, I, you know, I think really the, the primary issues that, you know, I think are reasonable, again, were the, were the septic, the wastewater capacity and cumulative impacts. And I think that the water groundwater model that has been done gives us enough information to document that, that, you know, septic systems aren't going to have a significant impact on, on groundwater slope stability. You know, we, we now have the information showing that we have the water capacity. And then we're working on the parking study to, to document parking. And, and really I think that's going to come down to, you know, the state regulations don't allow you to require parking for ADUs. And we might need to require parking for ADUs, at least in certain parts of the city. So, you know, I think that's just a matter of what the standards are going to be. Just to be, since I, I do want to, that, I want to remind the commissioners about the parking study. And I'm still looking for some, some volunteers. I want to mention that again. I've got Angela and a coworker and myself are the only ones doing parking counts now. So, you know, it's, it's not going to happen as we, as I originally visioned where, you know, there's a bunch of people going out on the same day and doing different times. But it really, you know, I can get up to Trinidad and, and back to Arcata, you know, in an hour, hour and 15 minutes, depending on how many cars there are. So it's not, it's not a huge commitment to go do a, a count. But, you know, I'd, I'd like to get some counts that might be a little bit more difficult. You know, night, nighttime, you know, fairly early mornings that would be easier maybe for people that are in town to do the counts. And since we're not setting specific days, you know, I'm, I'm really just trying to get random sample of various days and times. And I, I do need to start compiling the days and times that we have done so that we can try and hit some days and times outside of those. And we don't have it too concentrated, you know, Saturday at noon or something like that. But so I, I would, I, and I've, I've created some new map forms that I think are pretty easy to use. I can send those to you. And so I'd, I'd really appreciate getting some help. And so I'd, I'd really appreciate getting some help. It doesn't. You know, even if you could just do one or two counts a month, that would be really, really helpful. So. Um, that's kind of off the topic, but I, I don't, I meant to bring that up at the last meeting and I forgot.
Diane has a question, Trevor.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I did volunteer, talked to Angela about it. I've done a couple counts myself. You know, leaving the house on a Sunday at eleven and driving from my house, you know, so I, I'll volunteer. And then I compared with what Angela got. Because she did something on that same day and we were pretty right on and that was just like. One, two, three, four, five, probably six streets from my house to the, um. End of the school. So, put, put me down. Yeah, I want, I want to do it because. People are parking everywhere.
Absolutely, and I apologize. Trevor, send me the information. My wife and I, we walk our dog. It's, it's not.
Everybody's signing up. Tom, you're signing up too.
As long as we don't do it all on the same day.
Yeah.
It won't happen on the same day. And then I guess the question also is, because I've, I sort of also envisioned it walking and that, you know. There are like four different routes that you would walk that were half a mile each, but. Now, since it's just three of us, we're driving and we do the whole city. So that's another question is. You know, if you're walking, do you want to do the whole city? Do you just want to, do you want to split it up? But. Um, the, the forums are now pretty straightforward to use and it's pretty easy even just driving. You know, you have to stop once in a while yourself and.
I can walk. I, I can run, but, but maybe I wouldn't count as many cars.
It's kind of fast.
Yeah, and I definitely noticed, yeah, I did a couple counts on, uh, over Memorial weekend and there were. Not many people. I was very surprised and then, but last weekend, even when in the bad weather, it was packed. So I think it's just. Kids got out of school and.
Diane, you were going to say something?
Yeah, it, it's packed all the time. You just have to be living in the city. You can ask Erin. So I want to do, you know, in the city and I could walk, you know, underwood and part of Edwards, Maine. I'm, I don't want to get my car and do it. I want to just walk around.
There's no parking, so you couldn't.
I can. I can, I can ride my bike.
Well, as far as the ADU uh, document goes, it looks to me like it's really coming together. Trevor, I appreciated your point about, you know. Whether it should be called a second dwelling. I mean, that seems like, I thought that was pretty descriptive, you know, when you were saying like, should it be called? Um, a second dwelling or is there like a catchier name or something, but that seems to kind of describe it. Uh, both of them, the ADUs and JDUs. I was trying to think of what else, um, caught my eye. Nothing else really jumped out at me. I appreciated, you know, the discussion we had about kitchens and it sounds like you changed that and. So maybe someone else has some more concrete suggestions. Yes, Diane.
So the ADU and the JADU need to be in the definition, maybe put second dwelling and then put. Them in parentheses when you're describing, describing them. Because. The public. That aren't schooled on all of this won't know what a second dwelling is. So if they put junior. ADU and then ADU and then describe, you know, it's on the property or. Or it's in the, in the residence. It will help people understand and then, um. I think after. We get all the definitions, we do need to have a cap. Because, um. You know, we just, otherwise we could have a ton of them. I don't know. People are looking for houses and. I'd rather have them in that than on the street or. You know, in the parking lot at the market in their trailer. So I'm just thinking a cap in the future is going to be good.
I had just a couple super brief things. And I think you answered one of them is the, as far as standards later, so. You know, lot lines, setbacks, that's, that's another chunk we're going to take a bite of later, correct? Okay. Um, and then can you remind me what the. Requirement is, a JADU has to have access to a bath and I assume the definition is a full bath? What is, is there a definition for an ADU? Is there an efficiency bath or is there something? I, I just haven't seen that anywhere. I'm just curious.
No, well, that's, that is, um. I thought that was strange. Uh, the JADU is not required to have. Uh, a, a bathroom in it. Um, it can share a bathroom.
At least access, correct?
Yeah, so it would have to have access into the main house, yes.
Now, what about an ADU? What is the requirement for an ADU legally?
Um, that would have to have all separate sanitation and cooking facilities.
Including a shower of some kind, right? I'm just.
Yes.
Even silly things, okay, all right.
And, but that's, you know, I, I do want to have a question. I do want to have a conversation with the building official about this ordinance and so. You know, how. That's defined, you know. If we want to make sure a shower is included, you know, is that a building code? Is that already in the building code or do we need to include, include that in the ordinance? So that's a, that's a good question to bring up with him.
Okay, thanks. That's, I think, it for now.
Did you have something?
Um, it seems like the ADUs are spelled out quite a bit. They're to, to really make it for handicapped accessible and for, that would be an exception if they wanted it without, but. In their, in their stuff, they, they really spell out a lot. Um, JADUs seem vague, but it, or I mean, just open to anything, but it seems like septic is going to. If we just put maps on top of maps. It'll probably kind of be clear where we say, yes, it's okay here and not it's, is that, that's how I'm looking at it. Is that. Reasonable?
Well, you know, I think it might be difficult. You know, again, I, I was sort of looking at some of the overlay maps, um. You know, it's difficult to determine what are going to be the septic limitations. Be- before we actually. It, it is kind of have to be a site by site basis, you know, septic for one is necessarily going to. Kind of put a minimum lot size on, on these things. Um, the, you know, we don't need to put a minimum lot size on it, but you know, a six thousand square foot lot that already has a house on it. It's going to be difficult for them to. Get a septic system that's going to accommodate a, a, a full ADU. Um, on a lot like that. Um, but you know, there are, you know, it's going to depend on. You know, the, the footprint of the existing house and the ADU and so how much room they have on their lot. It's going to depend on how many bedrooms. There are some very large houses in Trinidad that don't have a lot of bedrooms, so they don't have to have real big septic systems. So it's, it's, you know, it's going to depend on, you know, the, the soils, so and, and how. You know, the infiltration capacity of the soils is going to dictate how big the septic system has to be. Um, so there are a lot of. Factors that kind of have to be looked at that on a case by case basis, but it's, it's. It is going to be probably the biggest limiting factor for ADUs in the city.
And did I hear you mention that there's, there's innovation coming with septic to where like a pre. Doing something ahead of time allows it to you to do more, or I mean, is that, that'll probably be an exception that'll come up. What about electric? Or some other kind of septic system, you know, to pre-do it before it goes in. But, um, is there anything that you know of at this time that's?
Yeah, so, you know, and I, I want to e- explore, um, the potential to actually. Require pretreatment systems in, in Trinidad a, a little bit more, more frequently. That's not really in our ordinance now. Um, like for example, with the Hasselquist project, we, the, the septic system is somewhat. You know, it's been recently upgraded, but it's a little bit undersized for two units that's, that are on the property and so. Um, one of the things we asked for was a, a pretreatment unit. So. A pretreatment unit is going to, um, you know, that's especially effective for nitrogen. Um, the, the eatery recently installed a pretreatment unit, um, for their sep- their. They have two septic systems on that property, the one to the kitchen. They recently installed a pretreatment unit. So that's going to, um, you know, really improve water quality. It's not going to affect water quantity. Um, which is an, another issue that, you know, it, it's still a, an issue.
Commissioner Johnson?
I have three real quick things. The first one is on page two of seven. Uh, and it's the issue that I, uh, uh, actually highlighted the, the, the last meeting. Uh, H, the passageway, unobstructed, clear to the sky. I don't have any trouble if that's what it's going to be, but if somebody wants to put a canopy on. I just want to make sure that that was, we figured that out. Uh, the next item is on page three. Uh, this is under ADU permitting procedure and the way I read this is that in paragraph C that there are specific. Timeframes in which, uh, if, if the, uh, if, if the city doesn't, uh, react within sixty days, the application shall be deemed approved. Uh, I, I get all that, but then I look down at the next paragraph. And it talks about noticing. And, and in there, it says that if anyone submits evidence that shows that the project will not meet the development standards. Uh, then the use permit shall be required. And be granted by the planning commission. So to me, i- it's kind of in conflict with the other paragraph. Now, I, I, I guess the, the, the fundamental difference is that it has to be someone who objects to. The, uh, to the permit, but in my mind, it's, it kind of is the same process we're using now. Uh, so it wasn't real clear that, uh, just because we waited sixty days, that, that made any sense. Uh, but maybe, I don't, I, I'm not sure that it's in conflict, but it just was a little confusing to me. And then the other thing is, the last thing I wanted to just bring up was on page six. Um, under, uh, paragraph G. Uh, unit access. We talked about this a little bit, but it says a separate exterior entry from the main entrance to the one. Family dwelling. Uh, that was a little vague to me and it just sounded like maybe separate from the main entrance. Uh, adding that word in there might make, I, I, I believe that that is the intent. That the entrance must be separate from the, uh, one family dwelling entryway.
Yes, that is the intent, um.
Okay.
Exterior or not, I'm confused now.
Yeah, so, so it does, so a, a JADU has to have its own exterior. Access, but I took out the requirement to have an interior access to the main unit. Um. Maybe I should add that back though, that says it has to have an interior access if it doesn't have its own sanitation facilities.
That would be good.
So yes, I can, I can clarify that language and. Yes, for the, the previous one too, I'll have to look at that and, and see how I can clarify that. So. The intent is that, um. Yes, ADUs that meet these minimum standards. Have to be approved ministerially within sixty days. Um, but because ones that require a coastal development permit still have to be noted, noticed. But you don't have a public hearing. We still have to send out notices and that gives people an opportunity to present evidence that it doesn't. Meet the standards. Now, I don't really see that, you know, I would think staff would catch that, I guess. You know, if there's a finding about aesthetics or view impacts, that could be something that someone brings up that. Um. You know, s- s- staff didn't anticipate and so then, then it moves into the use permit process and that sixty day deadline no longer applies. So I think I need to work on clarifying that language. In terms of the passageway, that is a definition. That is in the state regulations and the only reason they have it is to say that the city can't require one. So I, I think, I think the previous state regulations allowed. You know, requiring this passageway and now the state has said, no, you can't require a passageway. And so, but if someone wants one, they can have one.
Okay, a- and, and I, I clearly understand that. It was just the, uh, unobstructed view of the, uh, sky. I, I'm not hung up on it.
Yeah, I, it's strange.
Okay, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hopkins?
Uh, excuse me, just real quick, um, the deed, do we need to do anything to say that the, this has nothing to do with the deed of the property? Uh, more on that. I mean, I, I read it and it just. It seems like it makes sense, but in the legal world. You know, is that something that should be made very, very clear?
Sure, I, you know, I think, well, the, the whole ordinance will eventually be, um, reviewed by the city attorney. And I can make that, um, a specific point to ask him to, to review that. Again, that's language pretty straight from the state regulations. But I don't think these state regulations are always completely well thought out, so that doesn't mean we have to repeat the same mistakes.
Great, thank you.
Does that need? Use as well, sorry.
Go ahead.
I missed that, Aaron. What was that?
Yeah, the deed restriction, that applies to ADUs as well. I see it here specifically. To JADUs, but wouldn't we want it to apply equally to both?
And that is that it can't be rented or sold separately? Yeah, I, I think so. I think we should, we'll include that. As part of the standards for both, yeah.
That's kind of down the road with the standards, all right.
Diane, did you want to add something?
So Trevor, who's going to do, um, the ministerial okay or approval?
I guess I get that pleasure.
Okay, so it's not the building inspector? It's you.
It, it could be. It could potentially be the building official, um. I think I'm more used to reviewing the, the standards that come out in ordinance though, so it's probably best. It's probably best both of us, because, because they'll probably need building permits as well.
Okay, because he would need this. So he can read up on, on what, um. What we're talking about with the G, the junior ADUs and the regular ADUs, because this is, this is all new. And I don't know where he'd get the info if you didn't give it to him, but I'm glad you're going to do. That because you're good at all the, you know, ordinances and the standards and.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I found one note in here. Um, page six of seven, H two. Just putting it out there for us to consider, is this the time to start, um. Pushing people towards electric versus fossil fuel, natural and propane? Should we remove that as an option and only have electric? Um, I know we're headed there as a state and, I mean, it, it just might be, you know, for new ones, for new construction or newly approved ones that are not. Legal non-conforming or existing, a chance to remove that.
Aaron, what page are you on?
Uh, six of seven. H two.
Yeah, so instead of the natural or propane gas.
Right.
So yeah, the in, the intent of that is that it not, that it not require a natural or propane gas, that it has to be electric. So maybe that needs to be reworded to clarify that.
Yeah.
Oh, right, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so I got, I see what you mean.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I just, all right.
Well, that's good. It sounds like we need to, um, clarify that just to make sure.
Maybe just using electrical service only.
Yeah.
Not greater than hundred and twenty volts, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. All right, uh, last call for comments. Trevor, any, uh, thing we didn't get to that you need to. Get from us? Uh, Tom, are you raising your hand? Did you, oh, okay. Sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I didn't have, um, you know, real specific questions for you on this one. I think maybe except the name of the. I think maybe except the name of the permit, which probably doesn't matter, we can continue to think about that. Um, but these regulations will continue to be before you. And so as you continue to absorb them and as we continue to add the standards and, and other things fall into place, um, please just, you know, even if it's a section we've already talked about, um, please come with your, your, continue to come with your comments and suggestions, because we'll, we'll continue massaging this as long as we need to.
I think there was, you know, at first I thought second dwelling was a good name for the, or for the, um, whatever this is, ordinance. Must be getting tired. I think, I think Diane's point about, um, just using the standard name ADU, because the JADU is the junior ADU. So if we just call it an ADU ordinance, that's probably, at least it'll be consistent with the state or whatever. So maybe that makes more sense than trying to come up with a new term. Alright, um. Well, so that, uh, brings us to commissioner reports. So.
Point of order, just, just since we still have. We should ask for public comment.
Public comments, oh my goodness, I'm so sorry. Alright, let me open to public comments, please, regarding ADUs. And thank you, uh, Richard, for reminding me. Alright, I don't see any public comments. So I'm going to go ahead and move on then to commissioner reports. Are there any reports from commissioners on standing committees? Okay, I have a quick one. We met, uh, for the first time Monday, um, this Monday, uh, the Water Advisory Committee. Um, the fo- first focus was just on organizing the committee primarily. We chose a chair, uh, uh, council member, Columbus, and then, uh, vice chair, councilman, uh, Grover. And we focused our discussion mostly on water capture, processing, distribution, primarily fixing leaks, conservation and emergency drought response. And each member of the committee was given an assignment. So Richard took repairing leaks, Dave took investigating trucking impotable water to the water plant and emergency grout, or drought, uh, 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 response. And I took, um, water storage, uh, including water catchment. Bryce took, uh, uh, whether or not, or how we would access water from Mill Creek. Dwight Miller took, um, sourcing water from the Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District, whether that was, you know, what the feasibility of that is. And then Eli, um, was going to just check on grants, Eli and Becky, on grants in general. So we each kind of divided, divvied it up and we're going to come back with a sort of a two-page report. We didn't say how many pages, but I'm thinking two-page report. That just kind of outlines where we know where we're at today. And there's a lot of good information already out there, so we agreed to not reinvent the wheel per se, but just go ahead and pull together, um, some stuff for folks to review. So that's it for that committee.
Sure, could you say, uh, who the chair and vice chair is again?
Yes, uh, Columbus is the chair and Grover is vice chair. And also, Richard, I, I mentioned your suggestion, uh, to include some of the other little smaller water, um, I guess what are districts or water companies in the area in the discussion down the road. And that was, um, that was agreed to, that's a great suggestion, so thanks for that.
Was there a representative that I missed from Public Works present as well?
There wasn't anybody from Public Works present in the meeting, but there was a, a discussion about who we should have at future meetings and that came up.
Uh, just, just an editorial comment, this is what is confusing, because there's actually two committees, if you will, as I understand it.
Yeah.
And, and so this is the Water Advisory.
Advisory, yes.
And then there is the drought, what's the acronym, drought management?
It's a water shortage response team.
Uh, that's right.
That's from the drought contingency plan that the city council talked about at the last meeting. And then there's a third, there's the just water committee that, um, is, that is currently outlined in the water rationing ordinance, that's just two council members. And so that was Richard and Jack, I think, last summer. And so that, you know, we don't, we don't have the ordinance in place to implement the water shortage contingency plan yet. So I suggested to Eli that they keep that water committee in place until they do have that ordinance. Because if, if the city needs to order water restrictions, it's going to have to be under the existing water rationing ordinance. But I do, I do expect that they will have the new ordinance on the July council agenda.
Thanks.
Thanks for that clarification. Alright, staff report, Trevor.
Uh. I think you're aware of most of the things I've been working on. Um, we did just get several new applications in, the Rancheria's interpretive center. Um, an, an application to change the zoning of the Presbyterian church, um, across from town hall, um, to, to plan development. Um, and then there was a, a tree cutting incident up on Berry Road that will need a permit. Um, so we have some more permits coming in. A lot of them are, you know, I'm waiting for additional information for them to complete their application, but I think we've got eight unofficially and, and two more after the fact permits that we're expecting. So, um, that's going to start filling up our agenda, um. So I'm working on the parking study, I'm working on response, like official letter to the coastal commission responding to their comments, um, doing a few more updates based on those letters, uh, when I have time and that's it.
Alright. Uh, any peo- oh, uh, Tom?
Quick question, Trevor, in regards to that parking study, are we going to, like, we talked to Angela in regards to that, not to you, right, for like, to make sure I'm doing it the right way and everything?
Yeah, well, I will, yeah, I think you can talk to Angela, she'd be a great resource, she's been doing them. Um, I will send you guys these new forms, I think they're going to be pretty self-explanatory. I might also send you, I started with an inventory and then I created forms based on the inventory and people found those somewhat difficult to use. I might go ahead and send you the inventory, just so you can see. Basically, there's a, for every stretch of curb, or if there's not curb, every stretch between driveways basically has a box on a map and you fill in how many cars are parked there. It's, it's pretty straightforward. Um, you know, I'd like to, um, time, date, weather, um, you know, any other notes you want to include? You know, if people are parked illegally or, you know, a- any, any kind of notes you want to include, I'm, I'm interested in. Um, and, um, yeah, so I'm happy to answer questions about that and I'm, I'm sure Angela would be.
I didn't want to bother you anymore. You, you do a great job, thank you. But, uh, yeah, it'll only be if I can't get an answer any other way, okay? Thank you.
Diane? You're on, you're on mute, so.
Trevor, I'll pick mine up from Angela at the, um, at the, you know, the town hall, that's the best for me. Are you doing a parking study on the shopping center?
Yeah, so my original inventory did not, I'm primarily interested in, in public streets. You know, I think in terms of, you know, ADUs and STRs, that's, um, that's what's important. That's the public parking, that's what's the public access. But my new forms do include the, the bigger parking lots, um, and, and the harbor area too. I'm kind of interested in, in the harbor area. So that, that's kind of difficult to count, because there's not, you know, outlined spaces for a lot of that, but, um, and, but yeah, so I'm primarily interested in the streets, but, um, there are spaces for parking lots if you have time for that as well.
Okay.
Alright.
Trevor, just, you reached out to the Rancheria, they have security down in the harbor. I don't know if they'd be willing to help us out and fill it out once a day, just worth asking, all they can do is, you know.
Yeah, no, that's a great suggestion, that's a great idea. I, I will ask that.
Alright, any future agenda items? Anybody want to add?
I just had a question, uh, returning to in-person meetings, is that, we're going to follow the council's guidance or what on that?
I've been waiting for staff, yeah, to, and the city council, to tell us that things have changed. Um, Trevor, have you heard anything?
Um, the council did discuss it at the last meeting, but no decisions were made. Um, but they're, they're starting to, to talk about how, how that's going to happen. So yeah, that's what I, I'm waiting for council guidance as, as well. And then, yeah, I think, um, the, uh, I think Gavin Newsom just set a date for, you know, some of these open meeting requirements to sunset, which is I think September 15th or something like that. So, um, we'll have to be back in person, I think, by then.
Okay, that's good to know. Alright, yeah, good question, uh, Richard?
Just one comment on the West Haven CSD, uh, Intertie. Um, I had a conversation with, uh, Paul Rosenblatt, who's the general manager. And he's a little frustrated, uh, because he's got, he believes he has funding that he can use for a study and he just has not heard anything from the, uh, from the city whatsoever. Um, so, not that I'm suggesting that we need to take this up immediately, but I was thinking maybe as part of public comment at the next city council, I'll see if I can, uh, get them off top dead center a little bit and see if they'll commit to making this an issue or an item to discuss. I don't know that we have to do anything before them, but, uh, there's a lot of interest and there might even be some funding to support, uh, the initial, uh, study phase. So, um, I'll, I, I will do that at the next, uh, city council meeting.
I'll bring it up at the Water Advisory Committee too, just.
Good point, good, yeah, yeah.
Okay, um, I think that's everything, uh, give, you know, last, last call. If you have any other comments or questions or, okay, alright, good, good meeting, good discussion. I know it was difficult at times and we may all second guess decisions we made or didn't make, but we have an opportunity to revisit them in a few weeks' time. So, thanks for your time tonight and have a good evening.
Thank you, everybody.
Good evening.
Alright.
Night.
Night.